Good afternoon, everyone. This is the July 9th meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission, and I'm glad to see so many of you want to spend your afternoon with us today. First order of business is to say that, although apparently you all seem to know it, sign-up sheets are available on the table outside the chambers, and if you wish to address this about a case and you are not the applicant, you need to fill out one of these and give it to our clerk. I would ask you that you silence pagers, cell phones, and any other electronic device you might have, so that they do not go off while we're conducting our business here. You know, like that. And the first order of business is approval of the June 11th minutes.
Move approval of minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. Next item is continuances. Aubrey?
Yeah, we have one uncontested request for continuance, which would be on your agenda, item B-34, which is PUD 1588, to defer that to August 13th.
Anyone come to talk to us about that case today? We have a motion to approve the continuance. Cast your votes. It's approved.
We also have one new request for continuance of item B-30, which is SPUD 833, to also defer to August 13th.
Same question. Anyone come to talk to us about item 30 today? The applicant is asking for a continuance. Are you all in agreement with that? Not in agreement? Bear with me just a minute.
Is the applicant present?
Is the applicant here? Anyone here for item 30? Well, we don't have an applicant. We can move this -- it's almost at the heel of the docket to begin with, so it's toward the end of the meeting. The only thing I can suggest is that if you want to wait and see if the applicant appears, we would hear the item later in the meeting. If he doesn't appear, I suppose we can hear it without him. They might not like that. Yeah. All right. We'll just hear it in order.
Could some of the staff try to get ahold of the applicant, maybe?
Let us know what you find out, Lance. We'll move on. Are there continuance requests from the public today?
Mr. Chairman, Brian Coon, representing applicant on number 26.
Excuse me. Wait a minute, ma'am. We'll have you come up to the microphone. I'm sorry, Brian. Go ahead.
Okay. Requesting continuance on item 26 to August 27th.
And is anyone here on item 26 today? You've communicated with the protester attorney, Kelly Work.
I called and talked to the attorney this morning, and that's the only part -- that's the only connection I have. Let him know last night by email and phone call this morning.
And Brian, just, this has been before us, I don't know how many times.
Since November of '13.
What's the reason for the continuance now?
The report, it's all been on this drainage report. And the drainage report is completed. It has gone through staff. It has to now be set for a council agenda, but they cannot release a copy of the report until it gets put on an agenda. Once it's on the agenda, it's public knowledge, and we've told them all along, you're going to see it. It won't help anything. It's not going to make any difference, but they don't have it, so we're saying, okay, six more weeks.
Carolyn, where are you? Would you come up for a minute, please? The attorney for the protesters has asked for time to see the drainage report for Chisholm Creek. Apparently, according to both Brian's office and our drainage engineers, that report has no bearing at all on the application. But Kelly Work, attorney for at least some of the protesters, has asked that the item be continued?
Yes, we would like it to be continued.
Okay, so you're not protesting that today?
We're not protesting that. We would like to see the results of the drainage study.
All right. You understand it doesn't affect this application based on everything I know from engineers?
That's what they've said.
Okay.
But we would still appreciate the opportunity to see the drainage study.
That's fine. Well, Brian's agreeable, so that's fine. We'll do that.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move for continuance.
Well, let's see if we have any others first.
Okay.
Are there any other continuance requests? If you'd come up, please. And if you'd give us your name and address for the record and...
It's Teresa Provine, 5800 South Pleasant Hill, Mustang, Oklahoma. And I'd like to continue number 35 because I wasn't legally notified. And I am a retired hydrologist. The whole area that this is lying in is in a floodplain. I can do a report, give it to you. It would be easier than me getting up here for 30 minutes and explaining what's going on.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
David Box, 522 Call Court, on behalf of the applicant. I'm not sure on the notice issue, but I think there's constructive notice. So I'm not sure what a continuance would do. I do have an engineer that can speak to drainage. Guess we can ask staff on the notice issue, but I think there's at least constructive and actual notice, as you hear today. But it's the desire of the commission.
Excuse me. I am retired hydrologist. I'm not an engineer. I dealt mainly with floodplains, water, hydrology, contamination. I know all this. I can write up a nice report, and it will show the problems that we're going to have in this area. But I was never notified. I contacted Grubbs Engineering, who said they sent my notice off to somewhere off Southwest 63rd, and I've never lived in Oklahoma City in my life. So I said, so how was I supposed to know about this? So I got my maps Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I'm getting together a whole document, like I said, for you guys ready to read, and I think it would be easier for you to read each by itself than me get up here and explain it.
Okay. Commissioners, we've heard both sides.
And there are other neighbors here, and if the commission wants, then that's fine. If we can clear up a notice issue. But I know there were some other neighbors that came down to speak as well, so...
So are you willing to continue it?
If that's what the commission would like, that's fine.
I'll make a motion that we continue this.
When's the next hearing?
That would be August 13th. Cast your votes. Continued.
Can I ask, too, how do I submit my documentation to you?
To Lance Gross, sitting right there on the bench.
Okay. Okay. I'll get the information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other continuance requests from the public? No, I don't think so. Now, did the motion before, we still have item 30 to vote on the continuance? Because it was not included in the motion.
Move for continuance?
Oh, and 26.
For 26? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, 26.
26 and...
Not 30.
And, yeah, just item 26.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. It's continued.
Mr. Chairman, I suspect there may be people wanting to talk about 30. They need to understand that being continued. They don't already. I see some puzzled-looking faces when number 30 came up. That's why. And I heard you say that once, but I saw puzzled looks out there.
Okay. We will hear item 30, is what I said earlier. If Mr. Allen's here, that would be helpful. If he's not, we'll hear it in any case. So now we're ready for the consent docket?
Okay. There are four items on consent, which I will read. The first one is applications to close portions of streets that intersect with the BNSF right-of-way. Case item two is SPUD 838 to rezone 7,000 Plaza Mayor Boulevard from I-2 to SPUD 838. Item three is CE 909 to close a public fire lane easement north of East Sheridan and east of Russell and Perry. And item four is CE 910 to close several easements located north of West I-240 Service Road and east of South Penn.
We're going to pull item two to here in order. Anyone else come to talk to us about items 1, 3, or 4 on our agenda?
Move the remaining consent items.
We have a motion and a second to approve items 1, 3, and 4. Cast your votes, and they're approved. And in order.
Item two, SPUD 838.
David?
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. What we have is approximately five acres that is on the east side of the Plaza Mayor, formerly Crossroads Mall. And what we're seeking to do is rezone it to a spud to maintain the I-2 zoning, but add two uses that would allow a school. There's a school interested in going here, so this will just keep it as-is, add these two uses for the school to allow them to start. We do have a bit of a, obviously, a short timeframe. The school starts in August. The reason it was pulled, it may be an error. I'm not sure. I've not been able to get confirmation from staff, but the -- we had met with staff. One of the issues we sought to do was just keep our signage as is, as in I-2, as in every single thing you see on that map in front of you is I-2. I see no reason why to change one little spot in the middle of a sea of I-2 to something other than what every other property around it has. And we do specifically need an EMD reader board, as this commission knows. Schools, churches, things of that nature, offer so many different services and events that the ability to have a reader board is almost necessary at this point. So we would ask for your approval as submitted.
Tell me where the sign is going to be located.
They'll be on that east side, and as you can see from the map, we've got a railroad immediate to the east. But that big ring road that circles the former mall, we need signage with the reader board for those schools.
Where at on the east side? David, is it going to be where that, the entrance way is there off of the frontage road, or...
The exact location has not been selected, but it'll be somewhere on that frontage road, and we have limited frontage, so it'll be somewhere in there. And the sign ordinance, you know, what we've drafted is per I-2. Well, the sign ordinance is going to regulate height and number of signs based on lineal footage on the frontage, so I think, I don't think there's anything to be concerned about with the I-2 regulations.
Excuse me. You said this would be a charter school?
Yes, sir.
And it's chartered already?
What's that?
It's got its charter.
I believe so. They're just not able to make any decisions, obviously, until they get the zoning right to actually operate at the facility.
How big do you think the sign is going to be?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure? What will we allow that sign to be?
At this point, you're talking about I-2 signage, which is available to the site right now, so essentially...
Yeah. I don't have any problem with it, but I do think it needs to be as far away from the interstate as we can get it.
Oh, yeah. The interstate's all the way to the west or to the left, and the mall would be blocking. They have signage along the interstate. I don't know, Cindy, is there a... Okay. Well, you can see where it says Plaza Mayor Mall. You'd have to be able to see through that whole mall to see it. So I don't think there'd be a way to see it from the interstate.
David, on the technical evaluation that the staff has given us, just to clarify, you want a billboard?
No.
Well, your application doesn't address non-accessory signs.
Yeah.
And the staff report does.
Well...
And I don't want a billboard. The second thing is, on EMD signs, you say you want those.
Yes.
At what level?
Well...
I think level one would be appropriate. Any other, any other level is going to detract from drivers along, and we'll... This is an appearance corridor.
Well, it's not an appearance corridor.
Sure it is.
If you could show me where the highway is.
That's...
That's a railroad.
Oh, here. Oh, here. You're nowhere near the side, right?
Yeah. Correct.
Well, then, why do you want a billboard to show a freight train where you are?
We don't want a billboard. We want to delete TE2 to allow the signage as drafted in our spud.
Okay. I think that's the problem we're having. I hear you saying we want to go back to straight I-2, and Bob's saying, well, straight I-2 is pretty intensive. I also hear you saying what we really want is our EMD sign.
We can remove the one non-accessory sign use unit, if that's a concern.
Well, when I look at TE2, it has multiple parts. It has 8.1, 8.2, 8.3. 8.3 prohibits, for example, non-accessory signs. That would prohibit the billboard, okay? 8.2 says attached signings will be in accordance with base zoning. That's what you're asking for. So then you go to 8.1, and it says the limit's 100 square feet, 25 feet. Is that objectionable, or is it just that the EMD is not permitted?
Well, I think it's maybe both. I mean, I think if we alter TE number two to just have that 8.3, non-accessory signs are prohibited, I think that gets us to where we are. But I don't, I don't, or where we want to be. But I don't know that creating this little island in the sea of I-2 that has short signs doesn't. I mean, the school and the potential end user is going to dictate how tall they want the sign, and it's going to be primarily a directional sign for everybody within this complex.
Well, but under I-2, you can have a pretty good-sized sign face, and it can be pretty tall.
Only based, but it's only based on your lineal frontage. And here, we have limited lineal frontage.
But hang on. You can have one sign that's pretty tall with a pretty large face, and if we allow EMD, now you have this pretty tall, fairly large face EMD sign sticking up in the air that probably would look out of scale, and they probably wouldn't do it anyway, but would be allowed. And I think that's where Commissioner Bright's coming from. So if you can, if we... I don't think anyone has a problem with an EMD sign. But I think the straight I-2 part is what the hangup is, so if you can give us some parameters on height and size, this shouldn't be a big deal.
Well, would it be acceptable to have a maximum height of, say, 25 feet?
And have a larger face.
Well, and see, that I don't know. I mean, we won't know, but it'll be dictated by the sign code. And because of where we are, if this was a Google Earth image, there is, if you've driven it, there's no way you're going to be able to see this sign all the way to the east over here if you're on the traveling public.
Well, and that's my thought. In reality, I don't know why the school would build a tall, super-large sign, but I think Commissioner Bright's concern is that it would be allowed. And so I'm thinking we ought to be able to get there pretty quick.
So maybe we amend TE2 to say non-accessory signs are specifically prohibited, and the maximum height shall be 20 feet.
Fine. Do it.
20 feet rather than 25?
Sure.
You don't have a problem with the other language that attached signs will be in accordance with the base zoning district, or that no pole signs will be allowed?
Yeah, the, when we met with staff on this very issue, that's what we asked for, is I-2, which that's what... I'm not sure why staff put it in there. That's redundant, saying that the base zoning district would cover it. That's exactly what we applied for.
So you don't have a problem with that language?
Nope.
You don't have a problem with the language that no pole signs will be allowed?
Well, I don't know. I guess not.
Okay.
And would you have any problem with an EMD level one being your EMD sign?
We would have a problem with that.
Why?
Because schools, banks, they have higher level of EMDs, and so we want the ability to do the EMD level three, which I think is appropriate in this location.
So one accessory sign of no more than 20 feet.
EMD level three.
I'm sorry?
EMD level three.
Yeah, okay.
Not limited, we didn't limit the number, because there might be two, because you might need one on the north and one on the south. If somebody is in this big, massive mall complex on the north, they're not going to be able to see the one on the south, and then vice versa.
David, if we altered BE1, say all freestanding signs shall be ground monument signs, the maximum size being 20 feet high, 100 square feet, shall have no less than 25 feet of landscaping. You have no problem with that?
Well, on the square footage, I'd ask, just on the square footage for the sign, that the base zoning district apply.
Okay. Base zoning district, and then the part about EMD not be permitted should be just deleted. And 8.2 is overkill because it's an I-2 deal, but you're okay with it staying in there, I assume? And 8.3, you're okay with?
Yes.
Is that your mo, is that a motion? I'd move that as a motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve item two as a condition. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Not bad for an item that was on the consent.
I don't think I want to be on the consent agenda anymore.
Okay. We're moving to item five on the agenda, which is DA 2434-8A. It's a lot-split deed approval at 6605 Southeast 59.
Call the fever for the applicant. This is a property on 59th Street, south of the Teter Air Force Base, that was purchased by the Oklahoma Industrial Authority from Oklahoma County some weeks ago, and has been leased to Boeing for a new facility at this location. Boeing had some requirements as far as breaking this 40-acre track up into some component parts. It has to do with some options they have to purchase things in years to come. The lot-split deed approval, we ended up with four tracks here, a large one and three smaller ones, but the last of the three smaller ones exceeded authorization for staff to approve, and so we're asking your indulgence there.
So it's a variance because they've had the requisite number of administrative lot appro, splits, I should say.
No approval of variance. Second emotion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item five. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Item six is C 6733, the final plot of Mirfield Village III, located west of May and south of Northwest 164th Street.
Good afternoon. Ernie Ish, representing the applicant. Mr. Roberts is here with me. We concur with the TEs and ask for your approval.
No one signed up?
Move approval of the application.
Second motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven is PC 10422 to rezone 308 Northwest 69th Street from R1 to I-2.
Is the applicant here? Give us your name and address, please.
Sure. John Cox, 11216, Spring Hall of Court, Oklahoma City.
There's no problem with your application. We'd just like to meet everybody.
Okay.
No one signed up?
I have a question. What's going to be, you, what are you going to do with this property?
I'm just trying to sell it. Yeah. Just, yep.
You say there's no problem with the application, but I am not crazy about this application. Even though there's a lot of industrial zoning in this area, the area specifically around this piece of property is developing as fairly nice, office, warehouse, and office uses. And I'd really like to see this come in on an SPD zoning application rather than as a straight I-2. I think straight I-2 just allows an awful lot of uses that would not really be appropriate for this specific place.
Well, the property's been in my family for 80 years, and it's zoned residential, as you can see, and there's not one home in there. And yes, there are many industrial lots, mainly surrounding mine. There are still a few residentially zoned lots around there. I have the property listed with a very reputable broker here in town, whose agenda is to solicit it to the type of developer that we would, you know, want in there and that you're referring to. I'm well aware of the new development that's in there and the nice office suites that have been going in. It's still largely a warehouse district back there, and we're just trying to liquidate some assets out of the, out of the family, and, but we're planning on doing it the right way, so...
Well, I appreciate that. Unfortunately, zoning is forever, and once this piece of property is zoned I-2, then I-2 uses can be made of it in the immediate or the far future, regardless of your specific intentions. I agree, there's no question it's not going to be developed residentially, and I don't have any problem at all seeing it developed in a way that is consistent with the other uses around it, but I don't think I-2 is the appropriate zoning level for it.
Well, I can tell you, if it will help, the serious inquiries I've received on the property have all been from very reputable developers to build office suites in the, on that property. The hangup has been that it's been zoned residential.
Well, can we, can we take a little time here and tailor an application for you that would permit it to be zoned along those lines, or to be used along those lines, and not with this kind of heavy industrial designation?
I don't have a problem with that. That was just the recommendation of my broker.
And that would be good advice from a broker, because they want you to be able to use just the maximum number of uses possible. It makes it more saleable, but if you, if you know that that's what you're looking for in the area, I think it would be a fairly simple thing to do that. And I guess my question is, can we do it before we meet again?
Nick, you want to say something?
Well, I'm all for nice development and usually pro spud, thud. If they know what they want to do and they make sense. I'm looking at this application in the staff report handout, and in the entire face of this sheet, I see a sea of straight I-2. I cannot find one PUD or SPUD in the entire, on the entire map. So requiring a higher level, whatever his SPUD turns out to be, in the middle of this other stuff just seems inconsistent.
I agree. I mean, everything is I-1 or I-2 around it, basically. R1 is not developing there and won't, and I don't see any reason to make this one track do something inconsistent with everything that's around it.
I'm not wanting to make it inconsistent with everything that's around it. If you went out to look at the property, it is developing as office and office warehouse, so that's what I'd like to see happen here.
But I can tell you, it's not entirely office, where, office over there. There's lots of warehouse space over there, so...
And I think office warehouse is appropriate for the area.
Sure. I would concur with Commissioner Gales in his recommendation.
Well, no one has signed up. Well, no one has signed up, commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve the application, just to get a vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 7. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item 8 is PC 10423, to rezone 437 Northwest 106th, from I-1 and R1 to I-2.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. I'm William F. Collins, here for the applicant. This map ought to speak for itself on what we're requesting. This is an I-2 parcel. By all rights, it should be. Much of it already is. The property on the north side of 106th is owned by my client that's zoned I-2. We're filling in the gaps of what's not zoned. Everything to the north, to the south, to the west is I-2 zoning. This property lies between Broadway Extension and the railroad tracks on the south side of Hefner. That's about all this property is designed for. Everything out there's got outdoor storage.
No one signed up, commissioners?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 8. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9 is SPUD 830, to rezone 8900 South Douglas Avenue, from R1 to SPUD 830.
Is the applicant here? Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Kongno, and address 15512 Himalaya Ridge, Atman, Oklahoma, 73013.
Thank you. Are... Have you read the staff report? Are you in agreement with the TEs, the technical evaluations?
I... I'm not sure.
Well, one of them references permits and says that exceptions and ABCs must be removed, which would mean they would require separate approvals, which is the normal course. And the second is the use of iron must be eliminated from the list of screening materials. Are you agree with... Do you agree with that?
I guess I have not... I didn't understand what you mean by...
On the staff report, page 9.
Page 9?
In bold print, it says, "Item A, approve application with the following conditions."
Okay, sorry. Yes, yes.
Okay, commissioners, no one has signed up. Any comments?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the item, including the TEs that you just agreed to. Cast your votes. And it's... Item 9 is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is CE 907, to close portions of South Douglas Road, southwest 87th, South Klein, located north of 89th and west of Southwestern.
Commissioners, we're on item 10. No one signed up.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 10. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11 is SPUD 834, to rezone 2040 Northwest 25th Street, from R1, R4, and C3 to SPUD 834.
Is the applicant here? Well, without the applicant. Give us your name and address.
It's Brian Trotter. I'm in 3080 Highlands Parkway, Swanee, Georgia.
Okay. Tell us what you're going to do, please.
So we're... This is an area just south of the grocery store. We're trying to rezone it to commercial. Property intended use would be similar to a restaurant. This is it. I'm not... I'm not sure that there's anything that's...
Okay, we've got a neighbor who's got a comment.
Okay.
Mr. Ahmed, are you here?
Can I ask, are you the owner of the property?
I represent the buyer.
Give us your name and address, if you would.
My name is Ahmed Seghoudin, and I own the property, the pizza house next to that. And one day, the broker called me into selling the property, and we didn't agree on the price. And now he told me that, because adjusting, there is a stairway to going the apartment next to my property. And they said, no, they're going to tear it down there totally, because then I cannot rent at the upstairs apartment anymore, you know? So that's the protest I have.
Well, the stairway between the buildings is an issue that would be between the 2 property owners. That's...
Right.
We're talking about whether we rezone a piece of land or not, and the stairway, which apparently services both buildings?
Both buildings.
As I understand it?
And they said they're going to knock it down, that stairs. So if it is knock it down, then I cannot go upstairs no more.
Well, I don't know on whose property the stairs stand, or if it's split between the properties, but it doesn't matter to us. That's something you have to work out with your neighbor if they wanted to make some other arrangement.
But then I have to protest, you know?
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, we can't... Your protest relates to a stairway.
Right.
Not the zoning.
No, not the zoning.
And the only thing we can deal with here is, by law, is the zoning. So the fact that there's been a shared stairway over the years...
Yeah, over the years.
And one property owner or the other no longer wants to have it there is something the 2 of you have to settle. But we can't settle it here.
So should I...
We have no authority to settle it, in other words.
Okay. So what should I do? Do I protest it? And...
Well, you're protesting it here won't help, because we have no jurisdiction over the stairway. So we can't make that decision.
No, but as a neighborhood, I'm the next door to the person, so I can protest it. R1 is there. Can they stop it?
Well, you're not protesting the zoning.
No, I'm not.
You're protesting whether you can use the stairs or not. And we can't resolve that for you. So the only thing we can consider is, is the zoning request reasonable in light of the ordinances we have and the statutes we have to observe?
Well, the subject property is zoned R1. So I guess that is somewhat related to this guy's... Not necessarily to the stairway. He's maybe not articulating his protest artfully. However, you might suggest that it's protesting the change in zoning from R1 and R4 in this particular case? Just to frame your issue for you.
Right.
The property is C3 that attaches to his property. All right, currently.
Right.
But it looks like you're trying to rezone a block that includes C3, R1, and R4.
To accommodate the entire lot size that we need, and...
Right.
We're open to discussions about accommodating the stairs. That's not... We just drew a conceptual design. I think that's what he's referring to, that shows the stairs being eliminated. I don't think that has anything to do with...
No, you're welcome to. If you do the stairs with me, discuss, and I'm welcome to, no problem. But the broker told me, no, it'll be totally down and things. I was upset. I said, what is this? You know, you are so...
We're getting distracted from the issue. I mean, do you object to the rezoning it for the use that he wants to put that site?
No, no, no. Objection. I don't have any... Rezoning is okay, no problem. But only the issue is that one. But he told me this is not the council to dispute, you know, so...
In that case, I think we can move on and approve the zoning, and just ask the 2 of you to solve that. But we can't do it for you here.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, as you said, the... What's before us is whether this property be rezoned for the use intended, which is to put a restaurant there. That simple. Yes or no?
Right. What do you think about that, Janice?
Okay, so let's talk about that. This piece of property does not have any access onto Penn. It doesn't really have any access to the south at all, although it says it does. What's there is really not access. And as far as I'm concerned, this is not the place to put a restaurant. It's not... The extension of this commercial zoning along this residential street is not good planning, in my view. If you look down Penn, the commercial zoning does not extend this far off of the street, anywhere. And I don't think it's a good thing to get started.
Okay. Fair comment. Commissioners, other discussion?
To Janice's point about this access to the south, if I'm looking at the diagram, it shows that you're going to take... There's a drive, a double drive to the south. Where does that exit in... What does that exit into?
That goes into the By For Less, just south.
So that... You're going to tie into the parking lot at the By For Less?
Right, so we'll have By For Less access, which will allow By For Less to have access up to 25th Street, and us to get access to Pennsylvania and 23rd Street.
Well, I don't... You know, I guess as a design, do we want By For Less people pouring onto... Directly onto 25th Street there? Just... I get it. It makes sense for the Zaxby's folks or the restaurant folks, but I don't know as a...
The property just...
We want a cut through... I mean, effectively, we're building a cut through to 25th across the parking lot here.
So right behind the grocery store is another street. I can't think of the name of it right now, but it's immediately behind. So there... Behind us would only be a residential piece of property, and then a fraternity house, to where it would cut through to the next street. And then immediately north from our most westernly access is a gas station. So it's a... It is commercial the rest of the way down Penn. And it goes at least to the middle of what would potentially be the property that we're looking at. So we're requesting rezoning essentially of just the 2 residential properties just north of that. So you can see that that's what North Virginia Avenue runs along the back of the grocery store. So there's already essentially a cut through to go from 23rd to go around. It's not... It's not that... Anybody that wants to get around is not going to go through the gas station, I mean, or through the grocery store to get to 25th Street. They're going to go down North Virginia.
And there is an alley south of your property, between you and By For Less? Is that what that looks like?
It's essentially a deeded alleyway that's been removed over time. So we... That alleyway, we could request to get access onto Penn Street from the alleyway. But we thought it would be too much work to try to get a curb cut in, and it would interfere with...
Then I don't have any access to my tenant, you know?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I think that the existing C3 zoning is at a depth that's consistent with the other commercial zoning along Penn, all of which has access onto Penn. The extension of that commercial zoning to the east does not make sense along this local residential street. Virginia is a paved street, but it also, as you can see here, is more or less residential. There's student housing for OCU on the east side of Virginia there. And I'm pretty sure all of that is... Well, I won't say that. I was going to say it's all enclosed, but I don't know that for a fact. But even on the east side of Virginia, you're talking about residential zoning, people don't go up Virginia to access the grocery store, because the driveway off of Virginia to the back of the grocery store is horrendously steep. So, I mean, it's just... It's not a feasible access. I think that the zoning that exists is as much zoning as there needs to be of a commercial nature with access along Penn. The idea of taking more here just makes no sense to me. And if there's not somebody else who wishes to speak, I'm going to move for denial.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, as I understand it, to deny the application, Janice? Thank you. Cast your votes. And... 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It is approved. By... The motion is approved, is what I mean. So the application is denied.
Thank you.
Item 12, SPUD 836, to rezone 4514 Northwestern from C4 to SPUD 836.
Hello, my name's Chris Papa Sorontu, 8514, North Georgia, Oklahoma City. I'm here to request rezoning of the property at 4512 Northwestern from the C4 to the Spud, 836. And for that reason, to put in a restaurant. We are looking and putting an authentic Greek restaurant, fine dining, that we feel will fit perfectly in the Western Avenue character. We are going to do some extensive work on the outside of the building, and then interior also. Issue that we have on Western in a lot of areas is parking. I have secured parking approximately about 50 spaces adjacent to the property, and they'll be able to enter through the parking lot directly into the east side of the building to go into the restaurant. We'll be making upgrades to the parking lot as well. And we're just excited about getting this...
Would C4 not permit a restaurant? Lance? Would C4 not permit a restaurant?
Yes, it would. Yeah.
So why do we have a Spud?
He needs his ABC.
Pardon me?
He needs the ABC...
Oh, okay.
...component of that. It's probably the only reason why it's here.
So why couldn't he come forth with an ABC application with his C4?
Because I suggested he do it as Spud, and he agreed to do that.
Okay.
All right.
I was having the same question you did, Mr. Chairman. I'm thinking, everything in here looks like he could do it under the C4, but C3 is fine with me.
Okay. No one signed up?
I think there is someone, probably, who's signed up.
Nobody signed... You didn't sign up, sir. That's why I didn't know you wanted to speak. Well, we'll go with you, then. Give us your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Bob Robinson, attorney for Jack Lombakis. Address 3829 North Klassen, Suite 201. Mr. Lombakis owns the Quick Clean directly north of this proposed property. The concern that Mr. Lombakis has is this restaurant has 7 parking spaces in front of it. Mr. Lombakis's business is open from 6:30 a.m. until 11:30 p.m., 7 days a week. What we're going to have with only 7 spaces of parking in front of his location are people parking in Mr. Lombakis's business property, which is going to impact his income and things of that nature. He has a total of... Mr. Lombakis has a total of 17 spaces, 4 in front of the business, 13 on the north side. Our concern is that a business that is going to... Our concern is that a business that is going to be open presumably late, if it's fine dining, they're going to have dinner there. My client is not going to have parking spaces for the people that use his business seven days a week. They leave the business typically unmanned from 7 o'clock until 10 or 10:30 in the evening, and when somebody comes over at that time and locks the building up. Problem is that when it is unattended at that time, and it's the busy business time for a restaurant, they're going to take those parking spaces that are needed for Mr. Lambakis's business. Our concern with the restaurant going in is just that, seven spaces is not going to be sufficient across the front of the building. There currently, and we've provided photographs, I believe, to each of the members, shows that there's an alleyway down the south side of it that goes into a fence. So they're going to have to have off-site parking. Not everybody, if they had valet parking, not everybody's going to want to have valet park their cars. I don't like valet parking personally, but there's not adequate parking that isn't going to cost Mr. Lambakis money. For instance, that three-hour time period, if he hired somebody at $10 an hour to stay there to make sure that the spaces were available in front of his business, that's $30 a day, $210 a week, $1,000 a month that he is going to have to now spend in order to make sure that customers for his place are entitled, you know, to park where they need to, right in front of his business. The business that was there before closed in the early evening, 5, 6 o'clock in the evening, and it was no problem, it made it available. But this is going to be the prime time when the proposed business is going to come in with a restaurant and take up his parking spaces. It should be expected. So we're opposing his restaurant being put in for that reason, is that the impact it will have on our client's parking and business.
So the 44 spaces that he's arranged for, you don't think would work in concert with your client's business?
The, I...
I mean, he's got 44 spaces and two lots that he's made arrangements with.
These spots are not going to be close by. I don't know if he's going to plan on valet parking, or if he's going to expect people to park, you know, a block away. It doesn't show where that parking is on the map, if that's the one south of the convenience or behind the convenience store.
You said, you said it's connected to the building, right?
I did, it's adjacent to the building. I did, I did in my application put in where the parking lot is.
Is there somebody else that wants to be heard on this?
Do you find where anybody signed up?
Hi, my name is Tony Liu, 4500 Northwestern Avenue. I'm the owner of the convenience store south of Chris's property. We've been there for the past 10 years, and the previous residents were there. They would have, we would have problems parking, and they would have their employees park on my property. The parking space that they would take up would interfere with me getting gas. I would have to go over there and, hey, could you move your car so I can get gas in? Because a gas truck pulls in right next to the utility easement to load gas.
Sir, you wanted to speak also?
Yes.
Come on up. Give us your name and address, please.
Jack Lambakis. I own the business at 4520 Northwestern, Quick Clean Laundromat. I bought that business in 1975, it's 40 years ago, and we built it up, I think, to be one of the nicest laundromats in town. This gentleman knows that because at one time he wanted to buy it. But it'll be a logistical parking nightmare for us there. It just will be. He's got seven spots out there in front, and people are going to be coming in, talking about valet parking. They can't see any parking, except my lot. What he has is all off-site parking. So, human nature, they're going to look for the closest spot, they're going to come through our parking lot. They may park there, they may see a sign that says laundry parking only, they may adhere to it, and they may ignore it regardless. It's going to be, there's going to be traffic all over the place.
Okay.
Secondly, in my letter, you have a letter there?
We do.
I don't know how they're going to keep food odors out of my laundry. You're going to have an exhaust fan, and up on my, top of my building, I've got 38, 30-pound dryers in there, and I have some big vents for makeup air. You've got to have that makeup air in there, and that's going to get in there. It's going to get in there, and it's going to be offensive to some people smelling that odor, and if it gets in somebody's clothes, you know, that's, that's going to be a problem, serious problem. And the word will get around, it's, oh, there's been a good laundry, but now it smells over there, and our clothes smell and so forth, so. And then with the parking and everything else, it's, you know, it's going to be a serious thing for us. My second generation of my family are getting involved in the business. My daughter-in-law is over here, she runs the place now, and, and one of my sons. So we'd like to pass it on to them. It's been a lot of work. Yes, ma'am?
Is the parking that's on Western public parking, or do you own that?
I own that property.
I know you own the property, but the parking along Western, the nose-in parking off of Western, is that public parking?
I don't think so. As far as I know, it's always been part of the property that I own there.
The reason I ask is, you know, they're involved in a, in a streetscape renovation along Western.
Right.
And as we, as we've been in that process, what we've discovered is most of the parking along Western, that is nose-in parking off the street, is actually public parking. The city has always taken a pretty liberal view that allowed property owners, business owners, I should say, along Western to put signage up. But in fact, most of that parking along there is privately owned. The only pieces, is publicly owned, I'm sorry. The only pieces that I know of that are actually privately owned are ones where there's an actual curb or bumper between the parking and Western, which does not include this piece. Mr. Lambakis is...
Lambakis, yes, ma'am.
He does have a parking lot next to his property that serves his business, and I understand that he owns that lot. When Mr. Papa Sorontu, I'm sorry, I always fumble over that, first contacted me about this, of course, the zoning he has is C4 zoning. He could make virtually any use of this property that, you know, a commercial use that you could imagine. And the very first thing I told him was, you're going to have to go deal with your parking because it is an issue all up and down Western. And as an overlay, just like we have a lot in Midtown and on the Plaza 16th, you know, we have this, and 23rd Street as well, we have this whatever there is good enough policy toward parking, but that doesn't keep it from being a real issue for the property owners, and particularly property owners that have been business for quite a long time. And, and, you know, there's tension with new businesses moving in. So that was my very first admonition to him, that he was going to have to go deal with his parking. And he did, and he did it immediately, and he did it in a way that makes a lot of sense to me. There is a parking lot that is actually owned by Catch, isn't it?
Running Catch.
So it is, it is behind your property, and it is enclosed by a fence, and it had been, had been looked at by other business owners as parking before, but because it is sort of tucked away, you know, they didn't find it to be particularly useful to them. What's lucky for Mr. Papa Sorontu is that it opens onto his property, so he can access directly from his property into that parking area. People don't have to walk from their car up back to Western and around the corner to get into the restaurant. So I, I think that Mr. Papa Sorontu would probably be willing to do whatever would be appropriate to make sure that the business next door has access to whatever parking it needs to fulfill its business needs. And I don't think that its access to the parking, which is enclosed behind the convenience store gas station, is going to interfere with their business operation either.
And we will be manning that out front, at least for several months, to educate our customers where to park. I've known Mr. Jack for my whole life, and it's very tough to sit against him, but I don't want to hurt his business, and I will contribute to help him not have my customers parking on his side, so.
You...
If there's not anybody else that wants to be heard on this matter, oh, there was one thing.
Wait, just a minute. I, I'm not clear on this, because if I, it seems to me, if I approve this S.P., that the zoning is in place, he could put his restaurant there, and frankly, we wouldn't be able to do anything about it, and you guys would have to wrestle out the parking, right? Frankly, I don't, I don't see why we want to get involved.
Well, Mike...
To be honest.
That was my initial reaction. Also, that's why I asked the question in with. But what this really boils down to is not all this, you know, he's got, he's gone out and got the parking for which he should be commended, but really, what this boils down to before us now is there's a restaurant or a proposed restaurant at this site, is ABC appropriate because it's built in. So it's, in essence, kind of an ABC application. And, you know, I'm kind of with Janice. I, it looks like everything's lined up, and the parking is an issue that needs to be managed, just like with every business up and down Western and that immediate area, 23rd Street also.
And let me, let me add to that. I'm in total agreement, because the puzzling thing is, you've got a C4 zoning thing, and you can do what you want to do with a bazillion uses, and what I do, I appreciate you coming in before this commission with renovations, with exceptions, with ideas to make this better for your neighbors, whereas somebody else, some jerk, could come in there, open the doors, and Lordy Pete, you could have chaos in this thing without any control whatsoever. So I appreciate what you've done, and I'll leave it to Janice to make a motion, if you want to do that, but...
I, I will do that, although I wanted to make one slight comment about, under the convenience sales and personal services and retail sales and services uses that are permitted under this S.P.U.D., there are listed a handful of things that I asked Mr. Papa Sorontu if he would be willing to remove, that I would just like, prefer not to see along this corridor of Western, including tanning, massage therapy, metaphysical counseling, palm readers, psychic, and veterinarian. I don't think this would be a good place for there to be animals. And he has very generously agreed to remove those specific things from the application, and in so doing, I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes. Jim, you're not voting?
Thank you.
Oh, no, Buck's gone, never mind, I'm sorry. You're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is S.P.U.D. 837 to rezone 13801 North Meridian from P.U.D. 518 to P.U.D. 837.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Commissioner, my name is Josh Doherty, here on behalf of the applicant, address 4555 West Memorial Drive. This applicant is seeking a rezoning of this property to C3, that is within an existing P.U.D., P.U.D. 518. Our applicant and the design team has had significant collaboration with city staff on this particular project because the intended use is somewhat unique in that it's somewhat residential, somewhat commercial. In conversations with city staff, they felt the most amenable and conservative zoning classification would be C3. Our applicant was willing to go along with that in the interest of appeasing city staff. In the P.U.D., there was an increased setback above city standard for the base zoning in this area to 50 feet from 25 feet. Due to the geometry of the property, that caused the proposed siding of the building to encroach upon the setback, and so we are asking via this S.P.U.D. to simply take back the proposed, or the P.U.D.-stated 50-foot setback back to the zoning base district setback for C3 to 25 feet. I understand there is a protest today, so with that, I'll...
Before we get to the protesters, how much will this building, if you cite it as you've drawn it, will it encroach beyond the 50 feet?
I think it's about 17 feet encroachment over the setback line.
Okay, so it's significant.
Yeah, 17, 18 feet, something like that.
That's why you want 25, okay.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to understand that before we hear from protesters.
Well, I've got a couple of questions before we get there. What, this application first appears to be something to modify the setback, 50 to 25. Frankly, don't have a problem with that. But it also, once C3, it also says the uses and special conditions currently approved under 518 are not changed. Well, 518 is a 640-acre P.U.D. that's Galardea, okay? It was negotiated on a very wide-open basis because there was a very specific plan that went with it. And this application basically carves three acres out and makes it C3. Now, I don't know what your desired purpose is. I went by, people weren't there to talk to me, I called for Mr. Tally left word, it didn't get back. I've talked with staff, they couldn't answer my questions. What's the intended use here?
Okay, the intended use, as you can see on the, on the site plan there, the property is already developed, it has an existing building on it.
I'm aware of it.
Our applicant wants to put an additional building on it that will serve as essentially a social gathering place. We've, we've talked to city staff, and we've gone back between a residential-type use versus a commercial use. It's, it's simply a place for our owner, the property owner, to go and, quite honestly, just hang out with his friends. It is not intended to be an inhabited structure, an overnight structure, or anything like that.
Okay, and frankly, I have no problem with that. The difficulty I'm having is the way this is structured, this three acres is open to R4, so we can have multifamily, we can build three acres of apartments there. Now, you say, I don't want to do that. I'm saying, well, great, don't want to do it, take it out, okay? We can have all these C3 uses there. You're saying, we don't want that. So, can you, can you go back, continue this application and tweak it to the uses you actually want? And the setback, I don't believe is a problem, but the wide-open uses, you know, to put it to the commission a different way, if somebody came in here and said, I want to carve out three acres out of the 518 P.U.D. and make it great C3, what would we say? You know, I don't think there's a person on here that would think that was a good idea. And I'm not saying that's what you guys want to do, I don't believe it is. But the way this is crafted, you know, first of all, when I first looked at it, I thought, well, it's for a variance, and it probably ought to be going to the Board of Adjustment. The more I read, the more confused I became. And, you know, keeping all the 518 stuff in there, which was, again, crafted very carefully for specific sites in 518, probably doesn't fit this site any longer. So you probably ought to, again, get it out and put in exactly what... So you probably ought to, again, get it out and put in exactly what you want, and then I don't see a problem with it. But as it's crafted, it looks a little wide open.
Well, and if I may rebut, I mean, the intent, the sole intent of this S.P.U.D. is to modify the setback. We are not trying to change anything else on the property in regards to P.U.D. 518.
No.
As a matter of fact, our proposed plans have been reviewed by the Galaria Architectural Review Board. They've been approved. They've been found to be consistent with the architectural vernacular vocabulary that's been set in the area. The aesthetic is appropriate. Again, the design team and the owner has been collaborating with the city, and we talked about multiple paths to this sort of approval. We did talk about a variance through the Board of Adjustments. That was discouraged. We talked about actually vacating some of the easements along Meridian. We felt like that would be more restrictive to the City of Oklahoma City. If we were to vacate the easement, obviously, the setbacks are done off the property line, which would be the center line of Meridian. We didn't feel like that was most appropriate for the city. It kind of limited the opportunity in the future. So after a lot of discussion with staff, it was determined that the S.P.U.D., crafted like this, was the best approach.
I'm all for the S.P.U.D. But when your client sells this property, Commissioner Bright, and he puts in a C3 honky-tonk by right, there's not going to be anyone there to say no, because it...
And I could also have a 30-foot sign.
Well, we haven't got to the signage, but my point is, you've gone through all the hoops you need to go. You have a very specific use. You have a very specific design. All I'm asking you to do is limit your S.P.U.D. to that design and that use that you've already crafted and were there.
I think, just due respect, I'm... We're asking him now to take his existing, potentially, take his existing piece of property in order to change a minor setback out of a larger P.U.D. that may or may not. It seems to me that this is a condition that's not beneficial particularly. I'll let you be the judge of that, for this landowner. I mean, why would he do this?
Well, Mike, let me expand on that just a little bit. The site we're talking about is the maintenance facility and cart barn for the golf course, okay?
It used to be.
And it went away, okay? We moved that up north, and now this site is just kind of sitting there. And it's frankly looking for a new home. And I think this is a good use. I'm just concerned with the way that the spud is crafted. It's too wide open. You know, I know, I'm not in favor, in general terms, of piecemealing, taking little bites out of large P.U.D.s. But this is the part down on the corner that's recessed, it's behind the property on Memorial, up against Meridian that's not really Meridian, and never will be a street there because of the terrain. But I can see that if it does come out, that the uses need to be restricted to what they want here, and that...
This, Mayor, may not be a question to you all, but the P.U.D., the existing P.U.D. currently states the property is for C3 community and R4 permitted uses. So I believe the permitted uses on the parcel already as part of P.U.D. are pretty wide open. We could, right now, if the owner wanted to, which he does not, could build a multi-story, multifamily complex.
Perhaps. But, again, when you go back to the base P.U.D., this zoning applies to not only this particular site, but other areas, and they're very specific. And I believe if you drill down, this was, the specified use for this was the maintenance But it was put in one of those broad categories.
Yeah, parcel 15 of P.U.D. 518 was specified for commercial, retail, offices, and multifamily attached.
And how large is parcel 15?
It is 9.3 acres.
And how large is this parcel?
2.9233 plus or minus.
My point. This was designated as the maintenance facility. The commercial part we're talking about was designated up on Memorial. I sat through too many meetings on designing Galaria.
And I don't want you to misinterpret my stance. I don't want to be difficult. I just know that our client, this is now the linchpin or the critical path item, is getting this setback revised, and we've been through a number of processes, as we've been kind of coached as the appropriate path to solution. And so I'm encouraging to allow this one to move forward.
I'm strongly encouraging you to continue it and restrict your uses to what you want to do and the design you want. Again, you've presented the design to the Architectural Committee. They're good with it. We're not going to have a problem with that.
Is it...
But I cannot, I can't support a wide-open zoning.
Okay. Is it appropriate, then, to hear the protester, so that should we continue the item and satisfy your issues that we don't have a...
Well, now, that's another issue. I've read the protest. Reading the protest, I thought I was back on the Board of Adjustment, because it is a carefully crafted legal protest, citing reasons for variances, hardship rules, and things like that. I believe if you do what I'm asking, if you sit down with the protesters, I suspect their protest will go away. If it does not go away, they have suggested some specific language that you may or may not be able to agree to. I assume you've seen that language.
If you're referring to the protestants' caution about setting precedent on other properties...
Yeah, part of that, which doesn't go very far with us.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
But I'm assuming you guys don't have a whole lot of problem inserting that if needed be. But I suspect if you go do what I'm asking, their protest is probably going to go away. But I can't speak for them. I don't know. But I did see that language. It didn't look terribly restrictive to me. But, again, that's not my call. That's your call.
Sure.
We will hear from the protester. He's here, so I assume, Mr. Lawrence.
Blake Lawrence, 100 North Broadway, Suite 2900, on behalf of the protestant Jeffrey McDougal. I actually agree very much with Commissioner Gales and his views that the way that the spud is crafted currently, we find it to be a little too wide open and doesn't limit future use that's not intended, maybe not by, not intended by this particular owner, but might be by the next. It seems like this could be better taken care of in a variance. It sounds like the applicant has discussed that with the appropriate staff and chosen to go this route instead. You are correct, Commissioner Gales, that our, my client has reached out to the applicant to discuss language of the application, and that's something that we're continually trying to get settled in order to withdraw the protest. We're not against this particular use, but we just want to protect against future uses.
Well, so again, if you take a continuance, you skinny this down, gives you time to work with them.
I think my applicant and the design team has been very willing to work with all the parties involved. We don't want to do anything that would be contrary to what the protestant would be for, you know? Again, I'm sensitive now to the timing of the issue. We've been trying to get this pushed through. If there is an opportunity, Lance, I don't know if I work with you or perhaps at your office to get the appropriate language classified. Our intent was to not change anything in the P.U.D., so we wrote it that way. If, I just, I guess what I'm saying is, I want to be darn certain I write it the right way, so that it can be heard next time and is agreeable.
And I believe you can get with Lance on that and restrict it to your particular use, and go ahead and put your design elevations in, and I will be there. I suspect your protester will also. Again, I can't speak for them, but when I read the protest and I looked at the language they were submitting, it just looked to me like you guys could get together.
May I ask the commission if they would have, if you would prefer rather, a variance go to the Board of Adjustments on this issue with the restrictions in place?
If you come back to us with what Nick is suggesting in the protester, which is, describe what you want to do specifically, take out the references to commercial and so forth, you don't really need that.
Okay.
And you can come back on July 13th, which is our next meeting.
And that way, you can come back quickly?
August 13th, I'm sorry.
If you go to a variance request...
Yeah, you got to go through the process.
You all have all the notice and all that, and you've already educated us. Now you have to educate the Board of Adjustment. Plus, the variance will be just for the setback. And here, you're serving a higher need, in my opinion, because you're, we're getting that restricted to your precise use, which is apparently another problem the applicant or the protestant just brought up, so...
I may open it up to architects here as well.
Good afternoon. Pete Petromelli with...
Can't hear you.
My name is Pete Petromelli. I'm with Red Prairie Design Group. I just want to make clear, before we go back to our owner, that we're actually, even though even though our current S.P.U.D. does not modify the current P.U.D. in any way other than the 25-foot setback, you're asking us to basically remove the existing uses that are in the current P.U.D. So you want, you're wanting us to modify the existing, the existing P.U.D. more than what we're doing right now?
What I'm asking you to do is take out all that multifamily stuff, take out the commercial stuff that you don't need, and specify your particular use. And you can get with staff as to defining those uses, and it may be more than a single use. You may have several uses, but you're not going to have the plethora of R4, C3 uses that are go, you know, 40 possible uses.
I understand what you're saying. I just, I just need to make sure that my client...
You're taking only a portion of a tract that had specific zoning language in it?
Thirty-three percent.
And the parcel that you're speaking of had a particular, specific use assigned to it?
Well, that's not, that's not correct.
Yeah, the existing parcel 15, which is, which this property is a part of, about a third of, is already, per the P.U.D., permitted to have C3 and R4.
Absolutely.
The open uses on it. And so we are not suggesting to open that up further. We are not suggesting to restrict that further. The only thing we are suggesting to do on this property is to change the setback. So we're not, maybe it's an administrative issue with the S.P.U.D., we are not suggesting to open up the zoning to any additional permitted uses.
But what we're suggesting is, it's already too open, if you will, for this particular site, because it was meant to be and designed to be and was something else. And we were, as Commissioner Hensley questioned, would it even be appropriate for us to carve out three acres out of this big P.U.D. to begin with? Well, in this case, I personally believe it is, if it's done, if it's crafted properly. So in no way am I trying to restrict what your guy wants to do. I think it's a positive thing. Obviously, go over there now, since it's not used as what it was intended to be, it's really not a good use.
I think, I think we agree. I think our owner does, too. I'm hoping that if we can somehow accommodate the words here, we can...
Need to speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. I think our owner agrees. I'm just trying to figure out how we don't set him back another month. We've been set back about six months now, trying to accommodate this, and I think he's going to, he's going to give up a significant amount of his right on this site if we remove a lot of the openness of the existing P.U.D. And I'm hoping there's a way that we could somehow, today, modify the 25-foot setback and allow him to come back on August 13th with revised uses, so that we can at least keep the process moving, because we can't go through...
Well, nothing's going to happen in the process until we act on the 13th, one way or the other. We can't partially approve this S.P.U.D. today.
Look, this is a commercial choice. You get the ask, right? We need to move, I do respect to my fellow commissioners, but we need to move on. You understand what we're asking?
Yeah, I understand what you're asking.
Okay. Are you willing to take a continuance?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, so you got one month. It's clearly just a commercial decision that your client has to make.
Okay.
If he wants these restrictions on his land, fine, or he can find another way to get around this setback and have the open use that he's already been granted under his P.U.D. But I think you guys got it. You're not, you know, you're adults, you're big guys. Let's move on. I move this continuance for a month. Thank you.
Motion is second to continue item 13. Cast your votes, and it's continued.
Item 14, ABC 838, for an ABC-1 overlay of the C3 district located at 7,000 Northwest Expressway, Suite B.
My name is Tommy Hicks. I'm the owner of the Northwest OKC Wings DBA Wingstop at 7,000 Northwest Expressway, Suite B, Ward 1, looking to change this district overlay from a C3 to an ABC-1 to allow me to serve low-point beer sale.
No one signed up? Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you all for all you do. Outstanding.
Item 15, S.P.U.D. 839, to rezone 214 East Main Street and 26 East Main Street from V.C. to S.P.U.D. 839.
My name is Tom Holloman. 100 North Dixieland Road, Rogers, Arkansas. I represent Verizon Wireless. What we're doing in general for this project, Verizon, from a national level, has picked out Bricktown District, which is very complementary to Oklahoma City, as a special pilot project that they're trying out new equipment. All the wireless carriers, including Verizon, are trying to make their equipment smaller, less intrusive, what have you. That's where it's all going. They're still going to also have the typical stuff you normally see, but this particular project, they have focused on Bricktown, and it's a short-term project in terms of our world. And the equipment that we are going to use is called small cell equipment. The antennas are smaller, the footprint is smaller, and we identified four buildings in the Bricktown area, three in Bricktown, one just outside. Two of those are on the agenda today, and we have plans. We worked with the staff. We approached the staff a few months ago about how, what was the process and what we found, and I hope I say this right, and the staff is here with us. They found that in the Bricktown district specifically, there was no language in the ordinance that allowed our use on a rooftop. We're just going to install small antenna footprints on these rooftops. So what we have done, what you have before you, is actually a spud rezone. Did I say that right? I hope I said that right. We're actually rezoning our little 10-by-10 footprint. It may be the world's smallest spud. I don't know before this... So this is a very high-level project for Verizon, and we're only signing a short-term leases with the landowners, with the building owners at this time, and we think it may take a year, possibly two, at the latest, to test this equipment out. We're not even going to do it on a commercial basis. We're not selling. And the reason why we're doing it is because all the wireless carriers, it's a national problem. They're having capacity issues. They have coverage in these areas, but the intense use of the equipment is sucking the signal away, and so they're having capacity problems. So they're trying to design smaller equipment to put back in some of these intense areas to make the use of the cell and the iPhones and all that things more efficient and not drop calls. So that's, that's what we're trying to do, and we got approval yesterday morning from Bricktown Committee for these two buildings. And so that's generally what we're trying to do, and we'd like to move forward. Thank you.
The Bricktown Design Committee approved it on yesterday, is that correct?
Yes, they did.
And this is one, this will be two of four... And this is one, this will be two of four.
These two, there will actually be one more that will come before you, hopefully next month, that we couldn't quite get it in on time. So there'll, this, there'll be three in the Bricktown in that we just received our building permit for the fourth one yesterday. It was just outside of Bricktown, over on Northeast First Street, which it made its way through and was approved, the design, and we have our building permit. So we need all four buildings. It's, it's a pattern of covers that we need to do this.
Anything, show us what they're going to look like, or can you describe?
Well, it's in, we have.
You know, they're small, but.
Yeah, your typical, well, your typical antennas, if you drive around and look on, if you can, and by the way, you, because of the intense nature of the buildings in Bricktown, you, you can't even see on the roofs. I mean, you drive around and try to, you can't even see on top of the roofs anyway. But your typical antenna that you will see is your big panels. They're, they're five, six, seven feet tall, and they're wide. These are going to all be what we call Omni, and they're, they're round, and they're about three feet tall. They're, they're cylindrical, and they're going to be attached to a pole, which will be attached to a little guard rail on our platform. So you, you probably have seen something similar to those, but that's what these do. They're smaller, and they won't be more than six or seven feet above the roof, the top, the top of them, so.
Thank you. No one signed up.
Well, my comment about what this technology evolving is going to result in is the same issue that, or not issue, but the comment that Commissioner Hensley made several meetings ago about an application for a telecommunications tower. And, and there's, there's so much, in other words, you don't have a landline anymore. And I've given up, you know, trying to disguise them as a Christmas tree. But this technology, smaller, shorter, more intense, hidden, et cetera, I really, that's the hope, that this is going to occur with not just Verizon, but Sprint, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, rather than put a 150-foot pole with a bunch of stuff on it. The other technology will work. And, and I really, and I also, because the Bricktown Committee, those members that I've, I've worked with, you know, for the past several years, they know what they're doing, too, so.
Move for adoption?
Yes, I'm here second.
We have a motion and second to approve item 15. Cast your votes and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 16 is ABC 836 for an ABC2 overlay of the C4, UD, and 23rd Street Uptown Corridor Overlay Districts located at 459 Northwest 23rd Street.
Hello, I'm Alexandra Tran. I'm representing on behalf of Teresa Tran to request for the overlay of ABC2 for our, our building, which we plan to open up a restaurant in the future, so.
Okay, commissioners, no one signed up.
Are you going to evict the skateboarders from the back parking lot?
Can you say that again?
I said, are you going to evict the skateboarders from the back parking lot?
Yeah, so much skateboarders, Dr.
I wanted to ask you, just as a point of curiosity, the nose-in parking off of 24th Street, so behind your parking lot, is that public parking, or do you own that?
Honestly, I'm not really sure about that answer. I always assumed it was ours, but I've seen people park there, and we didn't have a problem with it. So I'm not really sure whether it's ours or if it's public parking.
Okay, I was just curious. I, you know, I hope that you will be an upgrade to the building and an asset to the community. I think, you know, it's hard to argue this is not an appropriate use for this location. So if there's somebody else signed up to speak, I'll move approval.
We have a motion and second to approve item 16. Cast your votes and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 17 is CE 908 to close Northwest 20th Street between North Eagle Lane and Davis Avenue.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Laura Holmes, representing Independent School District Number One, commonly known as Putnam City Schools, 900 North Broadway, Suite 300, here in Oklahoma City. Putnam City Schools owns the property that you see to the north and south of the road. This is Putnam City West High School. Those are the athletic fields to the north. They, district has now purchased all the land around this section of Northwest 20th and is proposing to close that so that the area can be fully fenced in. There's a possibility of actually utilizing some of the property to the south for athletic facilities, particularly a track. And that would prohibit, by, by closing the street and being able to fence that in, we would prevent students from crossing a street with traffic on it, and it's a safety issue. So that's what we propose.
No one has signed up, commissioners. We have a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 18, CE 911 to close easements located south of Southeast 89th Street and east of South I-35 and High Avenue.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of the applicant. The, the only comment the staff has made about removing the 17 feet along 89th Street, the reason why that's included in our vacation action is because we have already filed a plat that encompassed that area. I tried to call the staff and explain that, but Mr. Chambles has been out. So I don't think it affects us one way or the other. We can take it out or leave it in. I think in the future, it's more confusing to the surveyor that surveys the property if we leave it in, so. But I'll do it either way.
No one signed up?
Make a motion to approve the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve. What?
With the extra tract, 17 feet?
Yeah.
In or out?
Ask Jimmy. It's his motion. Yeah, did you want the tract in or out, 17 feet? In? Okay. Second, second was who? Okay, we have a motion and second to approve, to approve item 18, including the 17 feet. Cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you.
Item 19 is SPUD 827 to rezone 1513 Exchange Avenue from R1, I2, SPUD 496, and SRODD to SPUD 827.
Again, Tim Johnson on behalf of the applicant. This is for the area along the river for the Public Works Boathouse Repair Building. There is currently a parking lot there, and there's another boathouse storage building in the area. And we've gone to the SRODD and been approved. And so the spud just allows for that second building to be constructed.
Move approval? We have a motion and a second to approve item 19. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 20 is PUD SP 1508 for a specific plan of PUD 1508 located at 13002 North Kelly Avenue.
Hi, my name's Colin Fleck. I'm with Bacchus Payne Associates Architects on behalf of the owner. We're looking to just place a temporary sales building out in front of the building that's currently under construction. It'll be gone in three months' time.
So is the building there now?
I'm sorry?
Is the building there now?
The building that is under construction is there now. The building that they're looking to place is not there yet.
I see.
They've purchased it and are just waiting to place it.
No one signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and second to approve item 20. Cast your votes and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 21 is C6576, the final plat of Spencerville located north of Northeast 122nd and west of Air Depot.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering for the applicant. I have read through the staff report, and at this point in time, I, I would like to recommend that we do revise the plat and take off that south entry.
Do what now? I'm sorry?
I would like to revise the plat and remove that south entry. I've, across the street is just, they can't find anything good about it and everything dangerous, so in the interest of safety.
So what you're proposing, Dwight, is there would be no access to this new area off of 122nd?
Yes, sir.
All access would come off of Hunter Drive?
Yes, sir. The reason being, we have done, as the commission requested, got the traffic study and everything, went through Traffic Commission. They decided not to lower the speed limit, but to place a flashing sign to warrant of the existing intersection. There's, there is no viable site distance from this particular site. And if you recall, I did have a plat before you, not too long ago, showing. But I have jumped through, the phrase hoops, just to try to satisfy everybody and see what we could come up with.
Is there currently a traffic signal there or traffic light?
There isn't. They have, they have installed a flashing warning site since my visit to the Traffic Commission, yes.
Did we not have protests from the adjacent neighborhood at one point about connecting this? Am I remembering that, or is it?
No, early on, the lady at, basically at, at the end of the cul-de-sac on Hunter Drive was protesting because that would direct all the traffic for these eight lots right past her, her house. I clearly remember that.
That's what I thought.
And that's why we encourage the applicant to look at some way to, to get access to 122nd.
And, and in the staff report, they request that we have limits of no access along 122nd, so I, I think it would be a moot point to build the road if there's no access.
Yeah. Are you in agreement with the rest of the TEs?
Well, I believe the majority of the TEs will change once I remove that. Now, I do agree with the, the fire sprinklers, not a problem. TEs 1 and 2 boilerplate, we agree with that. Now, the TE number 3 would have to be revised to change because a variance will be required for me to use that other subdivision as my primary point of ingress egress. So there, there will be an additional TE that have to be added in, in place of number 3. TE number 5 is agreeable, 6 is agreeable, 7 would go away, 8 would be addressed, and 9 is agreeable. I mean, I, basically what I'm asking to do is go back to what we had brought before you previously, based on staff's recommendations.
Were the residents notified in the Hunter Drive area?
Yes, sir. That we, when we came, because we continued this indefinitely, we had to start out with the new mailing list and everything. So that did go out.
The difficulty with this application is it didn't work very well without the entrance on 122nd. Then the issue of site distance and the additional curb cut and basic public safety came into play. And frankly, I'm wrestling with both of those issues. You know, they certainly have a right to develop this, and I don't want to stop that. But I, I still wonder if it's not better to come out on 122nd. I can see how it would work if we didn't, but I, I'm really troubled that they're, you know, it's not that far up to the corner. I just don't see that, that much of a, an issue right there. It's a hill, I, I realize that, but I'm, I'm torn.
Are you suggesting that they take access out onto 122nd even though they cannot meet site distance requirement?
Well, that's what the, that's what the TE 3 originally was, was a variance for that. What we originally suggested was he go back, and the reason they couldn't meet the site distance was because the speed limit was too high. So we suggested they go to the Traffic Commission. Traffic Commission looked at it and said, we don't think it's a problem. We want to leave the speed limit high. So now they're in a catch-22. The Traffic Commission thinks it's safe enough. It comes to us this way, crafted for a variance, which I find a little troublesome. But I also find it troublesome to direct all the traffic back through that neighborhood. I say all the traffic, it's eight lots. It's, it's not, but you, you, if you just look at it, it doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do it that way.
Is this proposed location one where you have site distance fairly clear for one direction and virtually none because you come to a hill or a rise from the other direction?
The rise is back to the east.
Yes, sir. It is the site distance to the east that is, and.
You know, matter of fact, the rise.
To try to, to try to stop at the top of that hill.
The rise is more of a problem for Hunter Drive or whatever that street is.
And it was deemed that slowing the traffic down would make Hunter Drive more safe, which is why the, the flashing light was their method of choice. And I don't know if you recall from the previous submitted, but Nottingham, which has Hunter's Drive, was originally designed with that street to be continued. I do have an exhibit of that plat if you would like to see it.
I believe we recall that from last time.
Is there any more discussion? Well, let's hear from our traffic engineer for a minute. Tell us, give us a little specific background again, please.
All right. The Traffic Commission did hear this case, and when we presented it, the study that we conducted for the case found that the 85th percentile speed, which is the speed 85% of the drivers are going at or below, was 52 miles an hour. Posted speed limit's 45. We could post it at 35 miles an hour, but still going to have people driving at 52 miles an hour. It would create a false sense of security. The required site distance for 45 miles an hour is 780 feet, I believe, and there was no place within their property that would meet that site distance so they'd be able to see coming from the east, or excuse me, coming from the west. So that's why we said there was no site distance available for them.
Yeah, I understand how people adapt or decide what speed they're going to drive, and it's primarily the speed at which they feel safe. So they'll look at the road conditions, the width, the quality of the pavement, the amount of traffic, and not what's posted. So people, he's correct. If people feel safe driving 52 miles an hour, you can drop the speed limit, but you're not going to improve safety. And I think that's why the Traffic Commission didn't approve the.
I agree with that a wholeheartedly, but the.
So what do we, what do we do if we put people at risk, if we put another curb cut here?
Well, but the conflict to that is when traffic routinely reviews a plat for site distance, they don't go out and measure it at 85%. They look at the posted speed limit on, on the routine review. This is a different standard. Like I said, I have a problem with a safety issue here, but I also see the, the conflict.
You know, I think, I think it may be, I'm sorry, where you can.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It may be unfortunate to have to direct this traffic back into the existing neighborhood. It's only eight lots. I mean, I, I might not like it if I lived in one of the ones that would be having traffic pass in front of my house, but it, as you weigh that against a real safety issue like the site distance, I, I think I would have to come down in favor of closing the access onto 122nd.
I agree with that because I know how people drive.
And we've already, I mean, Hunter already has the flashing light there, and traffic is already coming off of there, so makes sense. The best of bad, two bad worlds here.
I believe I have gone full circle in trying to.
Dwight's done all he can do.
I move for approval.
Well, I believe we're able to modify TE 3 in a second.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on. We got to do, deal with the variance? What do you have to do with?
Well, we, if you delete TE 3, you've simply said no access to 122nd, but we may want to make an affirmative statement about.
Well, I believe he needs a variance to use Hunter now.
Yes, sir. I will, I will need an additional TE slash variance to allow that Hunter Drive to be my primary access.
We need to recraft TE 3.
Okay.
From what it is to.
All right, let's.
And then number 7 goes away, right? Number 7 goes away. Okay.
Well, number 7 can stay.
Seven would stay.
Seven would stay to protect, so somebody wouldn't have a back door to bring a boat or something in off of 122nd.
So we'd now say the developers were. So we'd now say the developers were requesting a variance to section blah, blah, blah of subdivision regulations as it relates to traffic going through.
Single or sole access off.
Sole access through Hunter Drive.
With that modification of TE 3, I'm moved.
Did I say that right, Terry?
I'm not sure what the section is, but you have to vote on the variance first.
I know, we knew that. That was being, we just caught that up here. Thank you. So you moved the variance first.
So we'll, I move that we'll remove the variance and then rewrite, well, let's, let's remove the variance first.
Okay, but do you have to re?
Amend the variance to TE 3.
Amend the variance to TE 3.
To require.
To require single access.
Through off of Hunter Drive. Right. Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the variance as amended. Cast your votes. Variance is approved.
Now, move for adoption.
We have a motion in a second to approve item 21. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you very much for your patience on this.
Gee, well Dwight, why didn't you do that the first time? We appreciate your efforts.
Item 22 is PC 10405 to rezone 4200 South Morgan Road from AA to R1.
Good afternoon again. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of the applicant. This is a straight zoning case, and it's, matches up with the R1 to our east. We intend to, to develop the land into single-family lots as shown on the underlying preliminary plat.
How long are your cul-de-sacs, Tim?
They're too long. We can talk about that under the preliminary plat.
Why don't you just loop this like your neighbor did to the east?
And that's what we've agreed to do.
I'm sorry?
That's what we've agreed to do.
We discussed that earlier. Okay, I didn't.
And it's one of the TEs for the next case.
Okay, I wasn't aware that you'd agreed to that. Okay.
So I'll move for approval on the zoning.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve item 22. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
And then item 3 is the accompanying plat, C 6732, preliminary plat at Park Place Heights, located east of Morgan and north of Southwest 44.
So as I mentioned, we agree with all the TEs in the preliminary plat, and we could strike the TE number 4 that requests the variance, and we'll redesign the plat to loop the streets.
Okay. No one signed up?
Well, I just have a comment that, that this is probably one of the most, more boring layouts of a subdivision that I've seen for a long, long time. Couldn't you do any better than have a half a mile long cul-de-sac going up and down in little bitty lots on both sides and square?
Well, they're actually not little bitty lots. These are decent sized lots. They're, they're your medium range lots as far as house construction goes. They're consistent with the lots to our east. It's, it's not effective to curve the streets like the guy to the east did. It's a little, it's gritty, but by the time we loop the street, it'll be an effective subdivision.
And the cul-de-sacs are eliminated?
The cul-de-sacs are.
Cul-de-sacs are eliminated.
Oh. Yeah, we're not going to have these long cul-de-sacs. We're going to reduce that. We may end up with a cul-de-sac on the corner or something, but it'll, it won't have a 700 or 900 foot cul-de-sac. That's what we've agreed to change.
So, so with removal of, of TE 4, I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve item 23, removing TE 4. Cast your votes, and that's approved. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. Okay, we are back in session and ready for item number 24.
Item number 24 is PC 10405 to rezone 9321 South Santa Fe from AA to R1.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll representing the applicant, and this obviously is a rezoning application to R1 for a 6.8 acre site that's located just south of 89th Street on the west side of Santa Fe. The purpose of this obviously is to permit a single-family residential subdivision. This is an application that actually came before you all a few weeks ago, at which time I was not involved in the project. And I know that at that meeting, there were some adjacent property owners that showed up and expressed some concerns. And so given that, as well as I think you all asked the applicant to try to provide a little bit more information in regards to what his plan was. So that application was continued at that time. Since then, I have been retained. We have submitted a preliminary plat as a companion item, which is the next item on your agenda. And since then, I have also met and had the opportunity to meet with some of the surrounding property owners, as well as have a conversation via the telephone with a few of them. In those meetings, and I think there are a few of them here today, and I do appreciate their time, being willing to listen to what our plans and to hear their concerns. But out of that meeting, there were a few issues and concerns that were discussed, but at least the, the way I took it, there was probably two primary concerns that they had. One of them obviously pertained to drainage, which I think you've seen a few letters that spells that out. There's a natural drainage way, and you can see it on the map, that's with the blue line that kind of clips the southeast corner of our project and then generally parallels the south boundary just off of our property line. And I know that that's just a natural drainage way. I think that there are times under heavy rainfall events that it gets out of the, what would be considered the normal bank of it, and so there's some concerns in regards to that. Obviously, it's an engineering issue. Your drainage ordinance establishes how that we are to go about and the parameters to which we would develop next to it. We intend to obviously comply with all of those. We'll run the appropriate flood studies with the final plat if we're fortunate enough to get the zoning approved, as well as the preliminary plat. We have, just for our own sake of mind, we went ahead and just kind of looked at it in terms of if we were to allow this site, which is 6.8 acres, it, it's in a basin that's about 450 acres. So we went ahead and just looked at it as though there were no detention to see what the impacts would be on flood elevations, and, and that comes out with just a rough flood study of really being negligible. There's no increase in rise even if we were not to provide detention. However, as I've explained to the neighbors, our intent and what we will do is we will provide detention so that we'll release the water from our side at a historic or less rate. Outside of that, like I say, that's what we're required to do. We fully intend to do that, and we'll comply with all of your requirements. So that was kind of the primary concern. There was another concern, I think, that pertained to the house sizes, which obviously I really can't speak to, but in relation to that, the lot sizes. I think some of the neighbors were somewhat relieved that it's not the 4,000 square foot lots that, similar to the project that's just north of this development. But we are, and you will see on the companion item, we're proposing 15 lots on 6.8 acres, which is a little over two dwelling units per acre. The lots are a minimum of 10,000 square feet. So that's our plan, that's our proposal. I think that predominantly was a couple, the primary concerns they had. And so I think if you look at this site, and you can see that we are, our application is for R1 zoning, and you can see the little red block there that would represent our site, and you can see that we are abutted on three sides by straight R1 zoning. And then I think you can also look and see the amount of yellow that shows up, which is already existing zoning and, and developed subdivisions. I've got an aerial photo on the back that generally would give you an idea of, of the development pattern that has occurred through the years and general densities, and you can tell by the house spacing, kind of the nature and the pattern of development in the area. So I think if you look at that in conjunction with the fact that your comprehensive plan recommends this area to be urban growth, in regards to, I know that some of the neighbors that are but us have a little bit larger lots. Some of the lots in that subdivision are four tenths of an acre, I think, on up to six tenths of an acre. Generally, the ones that are but us, I think, are around a half acre. Obviously, we are coming in with 10,000 square foot lots, but I think if you look at whether or not that's in conformance of compliance, that is spelled out and is addressed in your sub, or your zoning ordinance. And so obviously, that's the rules by which we play by. We're admitting that. So given your comp plan, given the nature of development going around it, given it that we're adhering to that, we feel like that this is an adequate application, makes sense, is in conformance, and we would ask for your approval.
Now, I have a question that may apply to the next bit, you know, the, the C 6728, but it comes in an application after this one, but isn't there a rule that requires abutting lots to be no less than 75% of the square footage of the adjacent lots?
With an upper limit of 7,500 square feet, and these lots are 10,000 square feet. So that does not apply. That's correct.
Oh, so it doesn't, it doesn't continue on? Okay.
Exactly. One other thing that I might mention that we did agree with the neighbors that we would attempt to do is there, the majority of lots that are but us do, actually do not have sanitary sewer. I think now water has been extended into the subdivision. But one thing that we will do, we got to be careful because I'm not so sure physically that we can make it work, but we will agree, and our intent will be when we extend the sanitary sewer to our development, that we'll try to keep it as deep as we possibly can. That would allow them to connect on to it as well if we can get it deep enough. I don't know that we can, but that will be our intent. So, and, and yes, like I say, that sub, or zoning code is 7,500 square feet. We're 10,000, so we meet your zoning code.
Okay, we do have a protester signed up. Oscar Quiroga, if I've spelled that or said that correctly? Even right here is fine.
Thank you. My name is Oscar Quiroga. My address is 9500 South Broadway, Oklahoma City, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to hear my concerns. My main concern is in regards to the size of the lots that they're proposing to, to put behind my house. My house is directly behind Mr. Su's property, and I'm not opposed to the idea of Mr. Su to, you know, develop homes in, in his area, but my concern is to preserve the value of our homes.
I can probably save us a lot of time. R1 zoning, which is what you have, abutting to other R1 zoning, the lot sizes can vary significantly, and we have no control over that as long as the lots are a minimum of 6,000 square feet. We also have no control over the size of houses that are built on either your larger lot or their smaller lot. So that's not something we can even consider as we decide zoning, just, so.
Okay, well.
If that, if that's your concern, we, there's nothing we can do to respond to you.
Okay, the other part was the drainage, which I don't know what this would do. You know, we already have a critical situation there with drainage in, in that area. So hopefully, I don't know.
Well, you heard Mr. Dillon explain that he's going to provide detention, that he's not required to provide in order to control runoff. I mean, he just explained that to us when he made his presentation.
Right.
And that complies with our drainage ordinance.
Yeah, well, okay, I appreciate that also. Mr. Dillon held a meeting in my house. We have four neighbors, and he went ahead and explained, you know, what they have in mind, but the concern is still with us, and I wanted to, to present that to you. And also a point that in the January 15 meeting, there was a comment made by the representative of Dr. Su that the lots would be a minimum of half an acre. And I don't know what, if that intent changed during the process, but when that statement was made, I was, I was happy, I was satisfied with that because that is more in tune with the rest of the lots in the neighborhood.
Thank you. No one else has signed up on item 24?
Kendall, I wanted to commend you for working on this. This was a difficult project, I'm sure, coming into it, when you did, how you did. I was, I sat through the meeting, and there was, there were some pretty upset people, probably how it was presented originally. Having said that, I'd like to go ahead and move approval, and that's not, I don't know if we can put this in, but that's, we're requiring detention. Is that possible?
We'll, we'll, no, we can do it in the preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve item 24. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
And item 25 is the preliminary plat for that development. It's C 6728 Ranchwood Villas 4, located south of Southwest 89th and west of Santa Fe.
Again, for the record, Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll representing the applicant, and obviously kind of giving you the highlights already of what we're doing, 15 lots, 10,000 square foot minimum. The one thing we're in agreement with the TEs, if you'll notice on TE number 3, we are asking for a variance on the maximum length of cul-de-sac. Obviously, we have limited access, and our variance is only really for 76 feet. But the 76 feet really helps us out in terms of the frontage on the lots and making them a little better lots, in our opinion, so we respectfully ask for that variance.
Okay, we do have two more people signed up to speak. Eric Schmidt.
Hi, Eric Schmidt.
Give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, 17 West Ranchwood Drive. I'm Eric Schmidt. We're basically just kind of come up here and oppose or protest about changing the lot sizes. I know y'all have already said that anything over 7,500 square feet, we have no rule over now. But in the original meeting, they had discussed that they would keep those in accordance with the lots around them. The lots across the street are over two acres. Eight of the lots that are adjacent to that property, all of them are almost three quarters of an acre, and they are three quarters of an acre in average.
You understand, we can't do anything about that.
I get that. I understand that. I'm not arguing that point. The other issue that I really had was the flood issue. This same firm developed the Santa Fe Villas that are north of there with all the little patio homes and all the drainage issues that they did there. They did ponds and all that kind of stuff to come down towards, and all they did was put a, like a curb in between the next street and between our properties. And that curb only comes to the edge of our property. Well, they're supposed to put a plume by law, or by code is from what I'm understand, if it crosses more than four properties. You know, a natural drainage, in which they did not. They did not put any plume all the way across those four properties because it comes across my property also, which is number five. So I know they've got a good game on what they're saying as far as all the drainage is going to make it okay, but it's not. It's still going to continue to flood where our house is, where Mr. Ortega's house is and Ms. Brown's house is. And basically, they're going to put all that water that drains off of that upstream from us, and they may regulate it, but it's still not going to change the amount of water that's coming through our property. It already floods. So, and there hasn't been a study done in that area in over 50 to 60 years by the Corps of Engineers. So, and everybody downstream, all the way down, floods all the way through there. So I just don't trust what they say as far as what they're going to do for drainage because they already did it before, and it didn't change.
Well, that may be a, a different developer or a different engineering firm. I can't speak to that, but as long as they meet the code, that's all we can ask.
They did not meet the code on this one.
Well.
I, I, I understand.
That one's history as opposed to what we're dealing with today.
Right. But they're saying they're going to put a retention pond. They don't know what kind, what they're. They don't know what kind, what they're doing with it. I would just like that to be more defined before we do some sort of plot that's approved to, you know, just kind of given general area that we're going to do a detention pond. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me that we're just going to have something and not have it defined even more, especially with the flooding issues that everybody already has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have some different concern?
No, basically, it's about the same that you've already shut them down for anyway.
We've heard it then. Thank you. Kendall?
Sure. For the sake of brevity, I'll not go into the drainage discussion again unless you all have questions. We'd like to hear it. But just as a point based upon gentleman's comments, the flooding issue has absolutely nothing to do with the subdivision to the north either. That subdivision has detention, functions the way that it should. The problem come when the development of the Ranchwood addition. That lot internally, they did not accept the stormwater that was prior to all the other developments. It runs across the back of those lots, and there's not a way to prevent it. It has nothing to do with the Santa Fe Villa subdivision.
There's a variance to TE 3.
Move the variance to TE 3?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Kendall, I'll move the application, adding a TE 7, saying that detention will be required.
That's fine. We'll agree to that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 25, adding TE 7, requiring detention. Cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you.
Item 26 was continued to August 13. Item 27 is PC 10421 to rezone 2101 Southwest 32nd from R4 to C3.
Ross Morris with Morris Engineering, representing the applicant, who actually is here with me.
Aziz Taghizadeh.
To the microphone, please.
Aziz Taghizadeh. Address is 11512 South Lynn, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
73170.
This piece of property they've owned, he's actually a partner with the shown applicant, Mr. Hushari. They're partners on the property. They've owned it for a number of years. They've never been able to find anybody to develop it as an R4. So in an effort to put it in a more marketable position that maybe they could sell it, they're looking to try to rezone it to C3. And we came up with C3 because if you look catty cornered to us at the intersection, it's C3. And so that's where we, we don't actually have a use for it. They're trying to maneuver it into position so they can sell the property and market it and sell it. So that's where we came up with C3. And we thought that, I mean, that's just a single residence, a catty corner to us. We felt like our property at least had some property to it that we could actually maybe make a strip center or something in there that proved to be marketable. I think we got a denial from staff because they felt like for C3, it needed to be closer to a major intersection such as like 29th Street. Again, we saw the C3 directory catty cornered to us and felt like, well, if they're C3, this property makes more sense to be C3. So that's how we got to that. We don't actually physically have a use for it at this time.
Commissioners, no one has signed up?
I can't see any reason that, I can't see any issue that's come up that may be different than what happened on April 26, 2007. Catty cornered, C3, there's a residence on it. Who knows why that was zoned? I mean, just it's one of those aberrations that this city has. And a C3, straight C3, nothing else is not appropriate for this. Same reasons, nothing's changed. So I moved to deny it, as the staff did.
Well, is there an opportunity to, I mean, do you see C2? Or, I mean, we're willing, we didn't have a particular use, so we didn't have a reason but other than the other site. So I mean, if it was a C2 or a C1...
You're smacking the riddle. R4, R2, R1, there isn't anything else other than residential, other than this aberration, this catty corner down the street with a house on it. And I don't understand why that would ever be C3.
Well, I didn't either, but we felt like ours had more potential to be C3 than that did.
No telling how old that C3 is, but it's a...
Yeah, I don't have any idea.
Let me make, you know, you're trying to market this, and it's R4.
Yeah.
Some time ago. This is, this is not a recommendation, but maybe a concept to be considered later because right now, street zoning doesn't happen. But Janice and I, and we went on a survey, kind of, and met to older neighborhoods. And the way the city was done in older neighborhoods, here's the residential area, and then there's a corner. It might have a little drugstore on it, might have a little filling state, you know, or some convenience thing, you know, that you put something together like that that doesn't have C3, which is bad stuff. But if in the marketing of it, you have the concept that, you know, to a potential purchaser, well, if you do this right, there may be a little corner grocery store, there may be a little something or other, and then we go in with a S-P-U-D that describes those things that aren't intrusive, but in fact could benefit the neighborhood. Just a suggestion, because it's been done all across the older part of Oklahoma City. And you'll see those nodes of commercial within residential areas. As far as this application, my motion stands to deny it. And I can't move off of that because you just can't have a straight zoning. But this is for your thinking about it. Anyway, that's my motion.
Yeah. I mean, they've had it for like 14 years, and they've tried to find something, somebody that's interested in the R4, and this just hadn't happened, so...
You know, what I thought you were going to suggest, Bob, the other thing that Commissioner Bright and I have done recently is go and look in his ward mostly, and a little bit in mine, at these pocket neighborhoods where people go in and take a piece of land that has been either passed over or for some reason has become vacant over the years. And with a zoning like this one has of R4, they go in and place several what would be single-family residences, but much closer together, smaller in size, with really high-end finishes. And they create sort of a little mini community, pocket neighborhoods, they call them. And they seem to be doing very well as infill developments. So you might consider something like that for this piece of land.
The survey, I mean, we went around and saw those little pocket neighborhoods.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Wait, just a minute, Mr. Chairman. Because in addition to a node for commercial, I would, you know, confirm what Janice is saying as well. But my motion stands...
So if we had like, had a use and an S-P-U-D to come in to allow that use, it'd be more interesting to the board then?
Okay.
Well, maybe.
All right. Cast your votes. And it is denied.
Thank you.
Item 28 is S-P-U-D 831 to rezone 515 Southwest 149th from AA to S-P-U-D 831.
Good afternoon. Greg Massey with Red Plains Professional, representing the applicant. This application is on a five-acre tract currently zoned agricultural. The intent is to develop as a professional office park. We have, in this application, restricted uses to primarily five-use units and all those dealing, excuse me, dealing with professional office, medical office, such as dental or optometrist and so forth. We've reviewed the TEs. We have no objections, and I'll answer any questions.
No one has signed up?
I noticed there isn't a great deal of discussion about your signage, other than freestanding signs will be limited to 100 square feet, and there will be no non-accessory Can you, what about EMD and things like that?
Those are specifically...
In the coverage, it says no EMD, but back farther, well, it's in part of the application, but backwards, it says approval of the application following conditions. Okay, I guess we're covered. Never mind, Greg. I'm sorry.
That's all.
Move approval? We have a motion and a second to approve item 28. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item 29 is S-P-U-D 832 to rezone 3033 Southwest 14th from R1 and SRODD to S-P-U-D 832.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dennis Fox. I'm here on behalf of Wayne Knoll. Wayne is standing next to me. It's not very often that we can agree with the different design districts, but on this one, the Scenic River Overlay Design District Committee got it right. They recommended approval, and we think they were spot on. Wayne and I were able to get zoning on Spud 191 in the late 90s. And it is a storage yard for his brick and stone. Wayne was owner of Fox Brick and Stone. He's now sold that, but he's still a brick mason and is a developer of numerous properties around the city. And what he has is, he's got a situation where his assets, being brick and stone, which you'll see on the first part of the handout, he sold to the City of Oklahoma City property out of Council on I-40 for the river trail. And he had a lot of his product out there, which is shown on the first two or three exhibits. What we'd like to do is in harmony with Spud 191, he owns a 50-foot wide lot, take that product and just put it south of Spud 191, which has brick and stone on the property right now. Your staff has a number of technical evaluations, and one of them is to limit it just to that use, which we're okay with. Make sure we don't have signage, which we're okay with. We can agree to all the technical evaluations. On the last one, which asks us to agree on eight, we can agree with that. When it says the specific regulations and guidelines the Scenic River Overlay District will apply, the only language I'd like to add is, as long as they're not inconsistent with our use. That's one of the reasons we did a spud, is because this use wasn't allowed within the Scenic River Overlay District. So with that, we're here to answer any questions. Wayne is here. And like I say, the Spud 191, we did for the same reasons. It actually has a number of uses. We're willing to limit it to the one use that we've asked for.
And just to be clear, Dennis, the Scenic River Overlay Committee is good with your use?
Dennis, what are these photographs of? Could you take us through what I'm looking at?
Yes, I will. With regard to the pictures, the first pictures are out at Council I-40, and that's where the product that we want to put to this site, this is where they're located. And the reason we're having to move them is because they're within the area that is part of the trail system that the City of Oklahoma City has now. So these first few pages show you the product that we want to move.
And that's the existing facility that you have, the first three photographs?
Yes.
Okay.
When we get to the aerial, the aerial shows our site to the north, which is Spud 191. Are you with me on the...
With the arrow?
Yes. That's the site in question on the zoning. And then we just go from May Avenue through the area, and this shows you what's existing within the area. That's an example of a storage yard that is on 14th and May Avenue. The house...
Let me ask the question, like the first one that has Ace Auto Salvage with a really lovely fence around their property there.
Right.
I assume that your site-proof screening is going to be better than that?
A lot better.
I mean, you know, you're not competing, the competition isn't really great.
Right.
You are.
They've set the bar very low. But that's an example of what's in the area. The house next door, we just wanted to show you, Wayne has already put that fence up that's next door, the stockade fence that you see.
Dennis?
Yes.
How will the brick be stored on the site? Is it going to be, is it going to look like the way it was stored up by Council Road? Or is this going to be a little bit cleaner-looking area?
Well, they're going to be on pallets. And my name's Wayne Knoll. I live at 2201 Don Marie here in Oklahoma City, have all my life. I've been in the masonry business here in Oklahoma City all my life. Fox Brick and Stone Masonry, I still operate that masonry portion of it. The quick history is that back in 2001, I purchased the property where these bricks are at. And it was ideal as a satellite location. The site that we're wanting to change the zoning at is a site that I've had since, like Dennis said, in the 90s. Its primary use is because I do mostly repair work. I store brick that's no longer manufactured or unique stuff that I use in what I do. And the city last year purchased 14.5 acres from me in this area. The reason that I brought the pictures that you first see in there is to see that as people walk down the trail, that's what they're seeing. And, you know, most of the stuff that I hear from the city is a sizable investment. We're concerned about the aesthetics of it. So when the city purchased that, they informed me I had to move it. And then shortly after that, when the city approached me and said, "We need to run a 48-inch water line," you have to move some more stuff. Since that, Kenworth has purchased the property, and so now I'm to the point where I've got to move it all. This site that I've been using for 20 years has been a quiet site. It's in a neighborhood that out of possible 30 houses, or six there left, three of those are unoccupied. The block to the east that goes to May Avenue has got nothing on it. All the houses have been removed. The ugly metal fence that Mr. Bright mentioned, that's not mine. And the new stockade fence that is there next to the yellow house, I just recently put up with anticipation of doing that, just to let people know what to expect. There's some existing vegetation, couple of large trees that join it, that's actually on an ODOT site to the west. And so to some degree, there's already landscaping in place. Getting back to your original question, you know, how's it going to be stored there? All the material's on pallets. At this location, I have forklifts and bobcats that if it's not on pallets, I've got to do it by hand, and so everything's on pallets.
So you'd be a good source for historic neighborhoods for brick no longer manufactured?
I do lots of work in Mr. Park.
Okay, thank you.
Lots of work.
Commissioners?
Well...
Discussion?
Well, I think that if there's agreement, I'm not sure what the qualification, Dennis, that you had inserted in TE 8, what that means, that you could do, I mean, these are uses, but, and you're not going to do non-accessory signs. That's all, with the agreement to do, to agree to all the TEs, I can approve, I can vote to approve the application with that agreement that you agree to the TEs and with that insert in TE number eight, as long as they're not inconsistent with what it is you do. And furthermore, the Scenic River, whatever, you know, they approved it, you know, so I move to approve it with those, with that one qualification on TE 8.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 29. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 30 is S-P-U-D 833 to rezone 1124 and 1136 Northwest 11th from R1 to S-P-U-D 833.
Charles Allen, Allen Engineering. We originally requested a continuance because not until Monday afternoon did we know that we didn't get the staff report and didn't know that there were so many protests against... know that there were so many protests against, I believe, the campground issue. Actually, probably more against the bar than actually the campground, I think. This project originally started with the north leg of the property, trying to divide that into three residential lots. It's already platted. It's one large block, actually. And then it's already zoned R1. We're going to resubmit for a lot split. My client then decided, you know, what else can I do with the land behind his bar? He owns Margarita Island. Came up with the idea, use the existing house, and had people that said, you know, they need a place to park their RV, so on, so forth. So that's where the actual campground idea came up. Since learning on Monday afternoon that there was so much protest to the campground, we are not going to do that. That's why we asked for a continuance, was to probably resubmit this with that north portion, probably a simple little cul-de-sac with R1 lots.
So you want a continuance?
Yes.
Okay.
But I understand, I mean, there are a lot of people that showed up to protest, but that's the reason why we asked for a continuance initially.
Okay, so, all right, well.
We do have three people.
I'm sure we do. I mean, we might should have announced this a little earlier in the meeting, might be a suggestion.
My name is Greg Taylor, and I'm appearing on behalf of the opponents to this application. I'm a lawyer, but I'm also a resident in this neighborhood where this action is being proposed. And I had trouble hearing Mr. Allen's explanation. I didn't understand what's a continuance, but I didn't, I couldn't understand what sort of modifications are going to be to the application. I was able to hear that-
Address us, and we'll have him respond.
Yeah, I was able to hear that the RV portion would be removed from the application, but I didn't hear, I couldn't hear the other portions.
If I understood it correctly, it's that he's considering, I had a hard time hearing also, but I think they're withdrawing, effectively going to withdraw this portion, this application. Come back with a new application that will be more consistent with the residential area. Is that correct, Charles? Okay, so I think there was a recognition potentially that that, that the proposed application was going to be protested, and so that didn't have a good chance of approval, frankly. So I think that's what the suggestion by Mr. Allen is, that they would withdraw this application, which he can do at any time in the process. I don't think there's much question about that. So that's my understanding of what your ask is. Is that correct? Okay.
Could we go a step farther with that while we're talking about understanding? I also had trouble hearing you, Charles. Maybe the microphone wasn't pulled down all the way or whatever. I heard a reference to the north portion being R1. Are you coming back with R1 for the entire track, or what's your intent?
It's, yes, it's currently zoned R1 right now. We would be coming back with R1, but showing you probably a cul-de-sac where the RV park is located now. We haven't had a chance really to look at the layout in there, but it's not going to be anything different. I mean, we're going to meet all the R1 requirements, 6,000 square foot minimum, so on, so forth. But it's obvious that the campground is not well-received.
So you're deleting the lodging accommodations campground, the 8300.50?
Correct.
Okay.
And how long would that take?
You don't want to withdraw your application, you want to continue it?
We want it to continue to August 13.
Yeah, and amend it. How long would that take?
To amend?
Yeah, what do you, what kind of continuance are you asking for?
To the August 13th meeting.
August 13th, okay.
Chairman, should we hear the other protesters because they showed up?
Well, if I could, my suggestion, and I'm not speaking for them, but it's, they're protesting, I would suggest, the RV use having received a significant amount of email on this particular application. And that proposal is potentially, generally, the use of Margarita Island, but that's not something that we really have much say over. And so if I paraphrased it wrong, I think it might be best if we, you get an opportunity to review the new application. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, we would like to have an opportunity to review the application once it's been resubmitted.
Right.
I can tell you today, and assuming, you know, the application is resubmitted in time to make the August 13th hearing, our position would not change if the application were to contemplate any sort of expansion of Margarita Island.
Right.
And I'm happy to, you know, share the long list of reasons why at that time. It may not be, you know, ripe at this moment, but happy to come back.
We understand, but based on what Mr. Allen is telling us, is this applicant's desire, they're going to bring this back as an R1, and I'm certainly sympathetic to the concerns about Margarita Island.
Yep.
And I think the whole commission is.
Before we move away completely, the three other people who have signed up, is a continuance for a month agreeable with you? That's Marla Dahl, Liz Eichman, who I can see sitting there, and Dan Robertson. Okay.
But I, and I assume, Charles, that you'll get with the neighbors, you know, you'll get with, and, you know, when you do the application, you'll talk to these guys?
Certainly.
You need to come to the microphone and give us your name and speak to us.
Marla Dahl, and I live at 8139 Northwest 11th, which is directly north of the area that we're talking about. But on our piece of paper that we received from you all today, it says 1124 and 1136 Northwest 11th, and that's incorrect. It's North Markwell.
Yeah.
So I wanted you all to know that.
All right, thank you.
And then also, you know, I think that, would everyone stand, I want you all to see how many people came today and banded together. Please, everyone stand or here for this today. I am so proud of our neighborhood, and I hope that our neighbor to the south of us will realize that. You know, we need him to understand how important this is to all of us.
We could understand the issue from the application, yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so do we have a motion to continue this to the 13th of August?
I'd second that motion, noting that Mr. Allen had said he's going to amend the application, bringing it back and deleting all the references to the campsite.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue item 30. Cast your votes, and it is done. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Item 31 is SPOD 835 to rezone 14308 South Meridian from I-2 and AE2 to SPOD 835.
Hi, my name is Jerry Garrett, 3311 Briarwood, Newcastle. I'm the applicant. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
The door will close, and it'll be quiet in just a second.
Okay, no problem.
Do we have anyone signed up?
Uh, no.
Okay. I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 31. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 32 is PUD 1586 to rezone 3800 East Hefner Road from AA, C3, and CHC to PUD 1586.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson again with Johnson Associates. On behalf of the applicant, this is a kind of the hard corner there at Hefner and I-35. To the south of us is an existing abandoned gas station, and then there's the restaurant, the Steak and Fish-
What used to be a good Italian restaurant years ago.
To, with, surrounded by the finger that goes out through the C3 is the developer, the applicant's office, Dottson Homes, who's built a very nice office there. So this property is behind his office. He's owned it for a while. There has been fill going on on this property for a number of years over time, because a large portion of it was in the floodplain. This creek has a very narrow floodway, because it's a very deep, very steep creek, so it's a very narrow floodway, but the floodplain was very broad. I came before this commission probably about a year ago, and on the AA tract, on the other side of the creek, we have a special use permit that was granted for an RV park in that area. So, and that project's still moving forward. So this application is a PUD to allow for us to develop a commercial, office in commercial use. I've reviewed the staff's comments, and I'd like to discuss item number three and item number four. I'm sorry, item number two and item number four. We agree with all the rest of them. Item number two is regarding the sign. You know, we're adjacent to the highway, the C3 to our east permits for a very tall sign. We've asked for a single 30-foot sign. All of our property falls away from Hefner. Hefner rises as it comes to the frontage road. Our closest finished floor to the building, for the closest building to Hefner Road is going to be up to 10 feet below the elevation of Hefner Road. So the property falls great to the south and to the southwest. So that's why we've asked for that one single taller sign, because of our proximity to the highway, want to be seen. We are willing to get rid of the EMD signs. And then with regard to the 100-foot undisturbed natural buffer, I know what the plan calls for with regard to adjacent to sensitive streams, but it calls for 50 feet. I'm not sure why it says 100 here, but as I expressed earlier, this floodplain is, was a very low, broad floodplain. The floodway is narrowed and basically the top of bank to top of bank. There are no trees left on either side of that, top of bank to top of bank. So providing a buffer there really doesn't benefit anything. There are a lot of trees left in the creek itself. Those will remain. We would be willing to agree to not encroach into the floodway at all, but in order to build in a broad floodplain such as this, you have to raise the property up. And so that's what's been being done for a number of years on both sides of the creek. So we'd ask that that be restricted to meeting either the Core or the FEMA criteria with regard to the creek.
Tell me about the, I'll call it the little finger that reaches out to the frontage road and runs directly into the on-off ramp there. That looks like a particularly dicey place to put any sort of a path or driveway.
It is a drive proposed, and it'll have to be, in fact, we've applied to the state, and I believe the state has already approved it, a drive in that location, that it meets the state's criteria. The picture is a little bit deceiving there, but the service road is a two-lane service road, north and south. You have to stop and turn to get on the freeway, and the people coming off the freeway have to stop. So it's a ramp-controlled exit, not a frontage road-controlled exit. And so that's why I believe that they approved the driveway. But we did run that trap with them early on, just to make sure that this would be a good location. From a visibility standpoint, it is a better location than any other place along there.
Tim, let me, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just had, I just had, to be clear, you said the state has already approved-
I believe that's the case.
-ODA or someone has already approved that?
We applied for it a while back, and I believe they've approved it. You know, we'd be subject to their approval. So if they don't approve it, we won't put a driveway there, for sure.
And then in this floodplain, the floodplain covers how much of this property?
Approximately the western third. That's the floodplain. The floodway is limited to those two lines you see, the two dashed blue lines. It's a very narrow floodway, as I mentioned. The floodplain, which, which, once the project goes forward, the applicant will submit what's called a Loma F. It's a letter map amendment due to fill, certifying that the fill's been raised above the 100-year floodplain, and they'll release that from the floodplain area. But we haven't done that yet, because the dirtwork's not completed out there until the project goes forward. But it's permissible to build in the floodplain. It's not permissible to build in the floodway.
Tim, on your signage, you said that the elevation goes down from the, from the north to the south, is that right?
Correct. Hefner Road is the high spot.
We've run into this before about elevations of signs, et cetera. And what I think, not, we don't have a guideline or a standard, but we've approved this, that 15 feet above, whatever the level is that the roadway has, we've approved that. So wherever this sign goes, it should be on the lower end of it, so that the elevation or the level with the highway, 15 feet above that is what you would have. So the position of the sign, I wouldn't want it to be on the far north end, where there's, you're on a hill. It would be on the southern end, if you want a 30-foot sign. So at any rate, 15 feet above the level of the road is what I'd like to see you agree to.
I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I think the problem with trying to specify it exactly is that I-35 dips down here slightly, and Hefner goes over. So there's, Hefner's high, I-35's low, the frontage road's kind of in the middle. I mean, we can agree to a height above the frontage road at the drive that we're talking about, or no greater than 15 feet above Hefner Road. Would that be acceptable?
That'd be acceptable. And then the second observation, I run across every once in a while a word that I've never heard of before, and the word is in TE6. What is a detiding setback? That's their word.
I'm betting it's a, it's supposed to be building setbacks. Supposed to be building setbacks.
Building.
It's a typo.
Ah, then it's not a word, is it? All right, good.
Tim, I want to follow up on Bright's comment, and that is, on Hefner, is that, does that, is that an overpass or an underpass on Hefner?
Hefner is a-
You're saying, you're saying 15 feet above?
Of Hefner Road, the road.
Okay.
Did I say that right? I'm blank. I'm pretty sure Hefner goes under the highway there. Yeah.
I was just going to say, you know, my kids both go to Connie every summer, and so I see this piece of ground a lot for a short period of time, and then not again for a year, you know? After all of the rain and everything that we had this year, are you comfortable with the plans that you've made for your bringing it up?
Building finished floors, yes. Yeah, the, in fact, the creek in this area did not come out of its banks. It's, like I said, it's a very steep, deep creek. The 100-year floodplain elevations don't rise above the bank, but the, because of the low elevation beyond the banks, it put it in the floodplain.
Yeah, I was going to say, the ground was wet, but that was just from the rainfall. That wasn't from the creek.
Yeah, the, on both sides of the creek, the properties have, did not get flooded.
Okay.
Because we're working for both guys. And, yeah, we try to stay in contact with things like that, because we've had some extraordinary rain.
Okay. With the agreement to, the things we want to add to the TEs with the 15-foot signage and, were there any other? Okay. Do you agree to those, Tim?
The, yeah, the changes we are asking for is on item number two, we'd ask for a sign that be no greater than 30 feet tall, but no higher than 15 feet above Hefner Road. And on item number-
Whichever is the lesser?
Correct.
Okay.
And on item number four, we'd ask that we'd be, not be restricted to 100-foot undisturbed natural area, but be restricted by FEMA or the Corps of Engineers restrictions.
Anybody know why the staff report said 100 feet?
The cop plan discourages any development within the 100-year floodplain. The floodplain here actually goes all the way over almost to the backside of the C3. And while the northeast sector does recommend a 50 feet, because of the size of the floodplain, we thought the 100 foot would be a better buffer, and that would encompass, most of that is encompassed in the floodway of the creek already. Not all of it.
I would agree. It's, we just didn't measure it, but the floodway would cover most of a 50-foot to 100-foot offset from the center line.
Does the 100's agreeable?
No. The floodway is agreeable. We don't know exactly what it is.
We could live with the floodway.
Okay. Just want to get that resolved. All right.
Thank you, Randy.
With those TEs, we'll move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 32 as conditioned. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
That's approved.
Item 33 is PUD 1587 to rezone 3925 Southeast 59th Street from R1 to PUD 1587.
Hi, Andrew Haruz, 210 Park Avenue, Suite 3030, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. We have a nine-acre section of land in which what we were wanting to do is to put a retail center and also a, I think the original PUD showed a car wash, we're going to actually remove that portion. And also with that, we are also, we are asking for adding a 2,500 to 5,000 square foot. I just received an email, and I apologize, and that's why this hasn't been updated to everyone. I was hoping we could discuss this today and maybe seek approval without actually having to continuous to the August 34th, or August 13th hearing, but what we were wanting to do, remove the car wash and instead add a 2,500 to 5,000 square foot warehouse for the retail. I think some of the, some of the businesses which my developer has already been in contact with, has thought that that could be something of real value to him back there. So I also know that some recommendations were made with respect to the mini storage and how it was built. I had a few comments on that, the first being the roof itself. Excuse me one second. Roof itself, what we were wanting to do with the mini storage is to actually have a multi-story mini storage, and with that, we were hoping to have more of a level roof. And so I was hoping to lower what that minimum amount is, which I think you all have it, five and, five on 12. Actually, we'd like to have it at half on 12, or even one on 12 would be acceptable. If we have a highly pitched roof on a two or three-story mini storage building, we think that may stick out a little more, wanting this to be aesthetically pleasing for the area. So we would ask for that change to be lowered. We would also, in several of the other PEDs and S-PEDs that I've gone through, and I'll be more than happy to provide examples, the roofing material wasn't specified. If that would be removed, we would, we would ask for that, the roofing material actually to be removed. I don't know if, we've been working with two builders and have yet to get, I was hoping to come here today with suggestions, but unfortunately, I haven't gotten that. And so I'm trying just to keep my options open for my developer. Let me make sure I've covered all this.
No one signed up, commissioners?
It sounds like there's a lot of changes moving through here, and I'm not sure I understand them all, and I believe probably appropriate, maybe go back, polish your application and bring it back to us on the next meeting?
I completely understand that. I was just trying to make an effort to get this thing through. So August 13th, is that correct?
August 13th.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that good for you? Will you agree to that?
But as a part of that, I'd like to see the elevations for this two-story mini storage, see what that looks like. That's, three-story, that's groundbreaking, so.
Well, and in that regard, we do have some, some guidelines for mini storages that you should make yourself aware of. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to continuous to August 13th.
I might make a suggestion that when you bring those renderings back, that they're representative of the pitch that you're desiring, and maybe of the pitch that was requested so that commissioners can see the difference. They might actually prefer one over the other.
Absolutely. I, I was given some pictures actually all this morning. Once again, I was, wasn't able to get everything circulated to the commissioners, so I apologize for that, but we'll get it all taken care of on the 13th.
Have we ever heard of a two-story, two-story, three-story storage building? And how do you get up to the third floor?
I've got some, some examples. I don't know if you all want me to show this to you now or later.
If it's climate controlled, I, I understand. You know, I've seen them in other places where they're climate controlled, and they do have interior access to them.
They're pretty impressive, actually, so.
I watch Storage Wars every day.
We have, we have a motion. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second.
Cast your votes, and it's continuing.
Thank you.
Item 34 and 35 were continued to August 13th. Item 36 is PUD 1590 to rezone 7,800 West Memorial Road from I-1 and O-1 to PUD 1590.
And ladies and gentlemen, I'm holding a bunch of signup sheets here. Those of you who intend to address us, if you're sitting all the way in the back, if you'd come forward, that would help us save a little time. And the other thing I'm going to ask is if several of you are here to address the same case, and I know you are, if you would not repeat what someone before you has said, but if you have new information, once we've heard an issue, we'd like to hear that new
My name is Mark Ritchie. I'm with Civil Design and Survey of Oklahoma, here on behalf of the applicant, if you're ready.
You're on.
I think there is some confusion in the staff report. The residents from Canyon Lake have pointed out a few things. I think we would be best served to go ahead and ask for continuance until we can meet with JJ to understand why he switched us to an O-2 base zoning instead of the O-1 that we'd asked for.
You want O-2 instead of O-1, is that?
We want, we, we had asked for O-1, but for some reason, he put O-2 in. It could be as easy as a typo.
Well, well, my staff report says O-1.
I thought it should, but... Commissioner Ellers, you're finding something that says O-2?
Well, on TE2, it says base zoning, it should be O-2 general office district.
In the project location and description, it talks about O-2, five-acre R1, O-1, to a PUD with, with O-2. In other parts of the application, it refers to, to R1, oh, I'm sorry, O-1. It's my understanding from a brief conversation, and also in the approval area, it talks about base zoning shall be an O-2 district. My understanding of a brief conversation with Mr. Ritchie is there's several office buildings proposed here that would certainly fit the O-1 category. So I don't understand the confusion either.
I'm comfortable pursuing the...
You're asking for O-1, and that's all you want?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. You ready to go on?
I'm ready.
On that basis? All right, let's do it.
We can, we can skip over to another exhibit that Cindy has for us. It's an aerial photo, probably a little more descriptive than the line drawing. Dr. McIner is the owner and developer and will be the occupant of the southernmost medical building there. He and I came before you probably a year ago after he purchased the land with a lot-split application and a zoning change. It was a simple zoning change, just adjusting the zoning line between the O-1 and the R1 to make the R1 a little bit larger, because at that time, his intention was to put one medical building up in this triangular-shaped area, and then to put his family's residence further south, back behind the medical building, in what's not depicted up here as three acres, roughly three acres of wooded lands, floodplain, that would have stayed R1. That application was approved. We did more planning. Subsequent to that, his current medical facility where he, where he leases space is being converted to climate-controlled storage. So he was asked to vacate, and that accelerated the process, and about the same time, they found a home that they wanted to purchase and move to. So the plans changed. And when the plans changed, we looked at this, this piece of land and said, you know, it's got really good frontage, Turtle Creek, the other office parks, Preston, Down on MacArthur have been very successful, a lot of executive housing in the area. What if we just went ahead and proposed to make this a little boutique office park? When we did that, we came up with this conceptual layout, or this proposed master development plan showing four office buildings with the possibility that the two office buildings on the west could be combined into one, because we didn't put any utilities or anything in between there. And that's how we arrived back in front of you, is in order to do this, we were advised the PUD process was the appropriate mechanism or the path to follow. It means we need to readjust the, the line again to get enough O-1 space, you know, for the, the southernmost building that's tucked back in the trees. It adjusts the three-acre, which what now becomes a common area, green belt, floodplain, walking trail for whoever's out there. And so today, we've, we've got a staff report, even if it's got a few typos in it, that we can, we can thankfully agree with all of the TEs, except for one we'd like to discuss a little bit. One is just that all the engineering requirements be met. We agree with the base zoning, with the understanding that the typo, the typo. Three is the 70%, 70% brick veneer rockstone masonry. The staff did ask that we adjust our proposed setback lines, building setback lines, to be 25 front, 15 side, 15 rear. We can definitely do that. What you see is what we plan to beat, build, and it meets all those three criteria. We understand that final plating is required. We accept that we'll only ever have one access point, and that's onto Memorial Road. We agree that to remove the industrial and commercial, that's my oversight. I left some language in 9.14 of the PUD referencing some industrial and commercial. It was my fault, and that'll be corrected before it's filed of record. Eight, we'd, I would like to submit to the commission for consideration the elimination of TE8 due to the small size and nature of the PUD application. The master development plan is, in essence, the site-specific plan. There's no room for creativity here. So the, the specific plan conforms exactly with the master development plan. The master development plan under subsection 59, 14150C, parentheses 1, emphasizes the specific plans necessary unless the specific plan conforms with the master development plan. These are one and the same, so it's not necessary. It's also, the site plan is, specific plan is also necessary if there are no dwell, not necessary if there are no dwelling units, none of these are dwelling units, and if we've detailed the square footage of the buildings. And after meeting with the Canyon Lake representatives, they took issue with the 24,150 square feet of office space that we have proposed here. And after speaking with my client, we will commit to reducing the western buildings, which totaled at that time 12.8, but we'll back it down to where his dentist's office is 95, 5,900 square feet. The northeast one is 5,450, that stays the same, but we'll reduce the west side about seven, 25, 30% to 9,650 feet. That'll give us 21,000 square feet, which exactly lines up with the parking that we have of 105 provided. So that also is a site-specific plan issue that your square footages and your building, of your building and your parking have to comply. That's yet another argument not to have to come through the site-specific plan process. The preliminary site plan for each building, the specific plan procedure requests that a preliminary plat be done, it's really not necessary in this instance because a preliminary plat primarily addresses where your public improvements are going to be, such as water mains, sewer mains, storm sewers, and streets. This plan will never have a public street. It's planned for private drive, private access. It's already currently served by the Paycom sanitary sewer along its west line and the, the Canyon Lake sewer along its north line. So we, we won't be submitting any public utility plans or public paving plans. There, there are no public, or public storm sewers involved either. So the master development plan satisfies all of the criteria for submission for the site-specific plan and the preliminary plat. So with that, we would ask that the commission waive TE8 and accept the master development plan in place of that, those steps.
Okay.
I apologize for, for my length. I know we're all getting tired. There was also a point of confusion about the sidewalk along Memorial. Initially, in conversations with the staff, comments were made, it's Memorial, there's a ton of vehicles, vehicles out there, it's one-way, there's a huge drainage structure at the west end of our property that you couldn't get a sidewalk across. Who's walking out there anyway along the turnpike? So we said, well, we'd rather not spend the money if, and we know our clientele aren't going to be using the sidewalk. They're going to pull in off Memorial, get their root canal, and hopefully have someone drive them home. So we, we had excluded the sidewalk. Canyon Lake mentioned to me yesterday in a conference call that they would prefer to have the sidewalk. They see commercial development occurring at Council Road someday and being able to walk out the gate and go to dinner or whatever. So I met with my client. He said he was glad to put it in if it was important to them. He wants to be a good neighbor. He hopes to get a lot of business from Canyon Lakes. So we've agreed to put in the sidewalk, or to remove the request to not do the sidewalk. And the last issue would be, the, the PUD has written to, to request that no screening be required, and that's because of the three acres of untouched native timber that's, covers almost all of the west line of the property, and all of the south line that's up next to the Canyon Lake clubhouse, pool area, their lake outlet, their dam, everything. None of that vegetation's going to be changed, removed, or anything. So we had asked for not to have to do the screening. The other reason is, quite honestly, my client really likes the scenic views out there. He had specifically picked that property because he likes to be able to look out. He specifically chose where his building went and where his operatories looked because he wants people to be able to see nature whenever they're getting their tooth drilled. But after, after the conference call with the Canyon Lake residents, they have an issue with their residents, you know, all of them come in through that southbound lane on that overhead that you can see, and they're going to be, our, that northeast building is the primary issue, if I understand their... That northeast building is the primary issue, if I understand their concerns correctly. It's 15 feet from the plat line. They then have a 10-foot common area, so that's 25 feet from the building. And then their closest curb line is like 27 feet. I think I told them a total of 47, but I misspoke on the phone. So we're at 25 plus 27. We're about 52, 50 feet. We'll say 50 feet from building to their curb line. They have vegetation. They have a split rail white PVC fence. When and if building, the northeast building, comes in for a building permit application, we have to do a site-specific landscape plan. We've already submitted one for the dentist's office just to kind of get ahead of the curve since he needs to vacate his existing facility. On the dentist's building, we put seven Nellie R. Stevens holly trees that are, you know, six foot tall and right next to each other. We'll be doing that same thing when we submit for a building permit on the northeast building. So we're going to have a very decorative residential style, aesthetically pleasing, steep-roofed buildings out there with landscaping and a 15-foot setback, then another 10-foot beyond their fence, and then another 20, you know, where it necks in, probably 40 feet to their curb line. So we think there's adequate separation so that you don't feel like, "Wow, I'm driving through here and my rearview mirror's going to hit that office building." And with the aesthetics, with it being a nice, high-end office park, we don't think their residents will really care. If someone comes to buy a Canyon Lake house, we really don't think they're going to say, "Wow, we don't like to look at the back of that high-scale MRI facility that has brick and stone everywhere and decide not to buy the home." If they want to choose to put in a masonry wall, I'm happy to let them. So is my client. And what we would propose to try to meet in the middle is that as we clear for the west buildings and for the parking lot, we will happily transplant the evergreens with a tree spade from those cleared areas, put them all along the property line. They even, on the phone call yesterday, conceptually agreed to letting us put some on their property in their common area. Trying to get what's required by the screening and landscaping regulations is a landscape buffer no less than six feet in width planted with a series of evergreen plantings at least six feet in height and spaced in a manner to provide an impervious visual barrier. That's what we propose to do to meet the screen. Even though we've asked for no screening, I'm here today to commit to doing screening from the dentist's office north of Memorial along the property line, meeting that criteria. Furthermore, to add to the continuity of their entryway, we propose to connect to their white PVC split rail fence where it turns a 90-degree at the pedestrian gate and extend it all the way south to the furthest south corner of the dentist's office building. So with all that being said, I'm happily addressing questions or providing more information in the deliberation of eliminating TE8.
I could remember everything you told us I'd ask a question, but- Commissioners, we do have people signed up, but any questions before we go to them? Okay, Mr. Livingston, you're up.
My name's Mark Livingston. I'm the developer of Canyon Lakes. My address is 6602 Cypress Hollow. One of the homeowners, Chris, actually has a better outline of some issues that he'd like to address. If I could defer to him, and then if there's something that I feel like maybe he missed, I'd like to step back in if that's okay.
Okay, Mr. Porter, come up. And give us your name and address if you would, please.
My name is Chris Porter. I live at 7629 Northwest 133rd Place. I am the HOA president for the HOA. We have 173 homes in the neighborhood.
Let me interrupt you right there.
No problem.
Absolutely. Who didn't make it to the meeting today?
We did have definitely-
Which two people didn't make it?
The, we did have, I think, probably eight, I think is what I counted as that counts, but most of them have rotated out.
Canyon Lakes is not a large addition, and this is one heck of a turnout for the neighborhood.
We've got, like I said, 173 homes, so 340-ish probably, you know, that could have attended but were unable to. I've met with my board. We've discussed the issue. I've met with multiple members of the HOA, and everybody voted to support me in the decisions that I'm in, in the presentation that I'm making. So I don't speak officially with them because I've not, we've not truly voted, but the group that I've had access to on such short notice has showed some support. As he mentioned, as, sorry, Mark mentioned, he covered most of the things that we're talking about, and it really comes down to a few issues. We've mentioned the O2, O1 issue. We are curious why that got rotated to O2. We have some concerns there.
Well, that's out now.
I know, I understand. I just wanted to repeat. I'm sorry. Don't want to try not to waste time, trying to move quick. So when it does get, the primary issue really does get down to the screenings, especially from the HOA members that discussed it with me. They were in 100% support that we need to block visually that build-out now from our entrance and from our landscape and our common areas and entrance and everything. So, excuse me. We, while we support what he's trying to do, and we, personally, I appreciate the Turtle Creek area, their office park. My wife is actually personally moving into an office that's being built in Preston right now. I have an appreciation for that look. The problem is the proximity to what we're talking about. They've got this great tree structures, and they're building up to it, and they've got limitations to what they're, how far they can build out to the west due to floodplains and things like that. But we're talking, as he mentioned, I think he mentioned 52 feet from the back of the building, but if you look at the diagram, we're also talking probably about another 10 to 12 feet of concrete for the parking lot. So now we're back down into the 30-feet number from our property, or from our driveway to what he's trying to build out. Now, I apologize. This is not my area of expertise. I'm a software developer. I've spun up in the last 48 hours. I didn't even know what PUD meant. But what I have found out is that I've read the regulations, as he quoted, between an O1 to an R1 on the abutment and the need for screening. Prior to my knowledge that that existed, he had agreed to the fence. I'd asked him for a solid fence to move through there. Specifically, we have one that's an eight-foot stone fence, concrete, you know, preformatted stone painted, and we asked for something to that effect so that we'd have a congruent, you know, pull-through. Because what we don't want to see is the back of the buildings. We don't want to see the parking lot. We don't want foot traffic to come up from the parking lot and literally walk into our neighborhood. We are gated community. We don't have any grandeur of security. There's no armed guards or any of that. But right now, we have a current, you know, property as it sits that you can't walk through because the tree line goes all the way to Memorial. You're going to be walking through some pretty interesting stuff. Now, I can't expect that to stay forever. We've appreciated that green belt, you know, on his behalf, and I understand that that's going to change. But we're talking about buildings being, you know, 50 feet or less from the entrance of our area and the ability for people to walk straight through. So at the time, I did agree that the vinyl fence was sufficient to move forward, not knowing what was actually in the PUD and the restrictions that he had excluded. Since then, I found out about what the screening means, and we immediately tried to contact him to say that that's actually, the thing I asked for, I think the quote over the phone call, was if you want a big fence, you can pay for it. And it seems like there's a coding restriction very specifically meant that whoever's building the O1 across the entire property line will supply a buffer between that office and our residential, and we're being told it's our responsibility to pay for it. And that doesn't sit well.
Well, the O1 obviously does require buffering or site-proof fencing.
Yes.
But it doesn't necessarily dictate specific materials.
No, I understand that.
I mean, if you want, I mean, they may agree to do a fence that's similar to what you've got or represents what you've got, or they may not.
Right, and I understand that.
Okay.
And what we're really, where we're at right now is that, two days ago, like I said, I didn't even know what a PUD meant. We've had some discrepancies. I was delivered a PUD by Mark through one of the members of our area, our neighborhood association, who is a property lawyer. He contacted Mark's people, got a copy of the PUD, and we went through it. That PUD has very specific differences in what the PUD that I was able to pull from the agenda this morning, not knowing that I could have pulled it at the time if it was even available, but things like there was no O1 or O2 reference even at all in the previous PUD that I got a hold of. Things like the sidewalk restriction were listed in that PUD. Now, obviously, he's backed off on that, but that wasn't even in the one that I pulled from the agenda. There was no mention of it. So we have some concerns that at 9:00 this morning, I found out about what he's actually trying to get approved, and there's some very large-scale differentiation between those two, and I have concern that I don't know what else we might miss or that I just found out about screening today, and I feel like we're so pressed on time that it's hard for us to feel comfortable moving forward with what he's going to propose. There was one other small issue, and that was related to signage in the PUD. I'm sorry if I can remember specifically. I think it was 9.10.1. And again, please indulge my ignorance when it comes to this, but it's referencing the signage, and it, in most of the overrides that are in the PUD, they usually refer to the base zoning requirements. And this may be a null issue, and if it is, please just let me know. But it was specifically page 4, 910.1. "All freestanding signs shall be architecturally compatible design in the office buildings and shall have landscape bases." But it says nothing about size restrictions, height restrictions, or any of that falling back to the base zoning requirements. That may be in another number, I don't know, but it seems like everywhere else that it goes back to base, that it references that very specifically. And when I see that, I'm worried about 50-foot signs that are 600 square feet. I don't think he's going to do that, but there's nothing in here to stop him unless it's something that I just missing. So those are really the three areas of concern that I've had, was the inconsistencies between the two PUDs, what we were provided, and the fact that we've only had the official one for, you know, since 9:00 this morning. The restriction that he's tried to put in place so that he doesn't have to meet the coding requirements of O1 to R1 abutment. I realize there's three different versions of what he can do as far as site-proof fencing, living fences through evergreens, or, you know, a 20-foot of untouched forest. And I've had conversations with Dr. McIner, the owner of the property, at which point he mentioned maybe splitting a fence. That was prior to my conversations with Mark. We've talked about moving trees in. I mean, in an ideal world, I would love to have the forest just moved 50 feet to the side. I don't know what we can do. It wouldn't quite meet the requirements, but we love that natural barrier, but it is something we've got to have, you know, the inability for people to walk through. In conversations with Mark, he mentioned seven Nellies. Those things are about five foot in diameter. We're talking 35 feet if you touch them side to side. We're talking about 350 feet from the back of his dental office where it hits the tree line up to the visionary corner, the visionary triangle at the front of the street. So if we're talking about a segmentation, we're 10 times off what he's offering. And he did offer, you know, some landscape potential, some tweaks that we could make to try to pull those more eastbound, but that's kind of gentleman's terms, and, you know, I don't, I'm not, I'm very uncomfortable with the idea of him skipping out on what we're actually asking for when it is a requirement currently.
All right, let's hear from Mark.
Well, are there other people? There's an awful lot of people here. Are there other people to speak before we hear Mark's rebuttal?
Only two have signed up for this. I suspect most of them are here for 16th and McKinley, if I had to guess.
Yeah, and if I could, Mark and I have, oh, I'm sorry. Mark Livingston and I have spoken, and we've agreed that we would be the two that come forward.
Mark, do you have anything to add?
I do. I want to go back to my mind. And I don't want to nitpick things and perceptions, but first off, having been the proud owner of just putting 1,400 lineal feet of sidewalk in front of Canyon Lakes, I don't think it was a big gift for them not to put theirs in. Like, it's not a trade-off with us. I put mine in, they need to put theirs in. He reduced to 21,000 feet of office because of parking issues, not because he gave us anything. I just want to make sure we all understand what's going on. And the reason I'm concerned about O2 and O1 is because I'm not primarily a commercial developer. I'm wondering if that change was made because 21,000 feet of office may not fit in O1 on that smaller side. I don't know. I think that's something we need to address. But the site screening, which we've talked about, that's the back of the building. That's where air conditioners and condensers are going to be, potentially meters are going to be. The Nellis Hollies and all the nice landscape and all the architectural details of a residential style office are not on the back. So when people enter this gated community, and although it's only 170-whatever homes, they're a fairly nice home, and I think we've done a fairly decent job of the development, they're going to be looking at some rather long bleak walls of brick with air conditioners and potentially electric meters and stuff like that. So whether it's 50 feet or 20 feet, that's what you're looking at when you come to this neighborhood, and yes, I am concerned as a landowner, because I'm still finishing Phase 4, and I am concerned for my customers out there. So I want to make sure why we think that the site fencing is so important between this office and the residential. And what we're asking for, and we've asked Mark for, and he offered to give us more time we could discuss it, is I'm sure some of you have seen the fence that I just put along Memorial Road. We would like it to be congruent with what we've put up against Memorial Road. It's a precast fencing system out of Tulsa. It relatively goes in simple, and we just, you know, we don't think it's that big of an issue. We don't care about the west and the south side of the property. We know that's heavily wooded, you know? That was never an issue, so that's not really a trade-off. So anyway, that's what I want you to, make sure we all understand the whole picture on that.
How long, Mark Livingston? How long have you all had a dialogue with Mark Ritchie on this?
We talked to Mark Ritchie during items number 28 through 33.
I know, agenda today.
Yes.
So you had not had any conversation with him before?
I hadn't. Now, Chris Porter had. They've, again, I probably should have been more active in this. They called me a couple of days ago and said, "Hey, are you aware of this?" And I said, "Well, you know, not really. I haven't really looked at it." Because the last time I talked to the dentist, he was going to put a house, and he was going to put his office there. Well, the zoning thing came through, and me being not very diligent, I kind of looked at it and put it on the side of my desk. I thought that's what was going in, and then they alerted me two days ago what was going on. And they've had some conversations with Mark Ritchie, and that's why I wanted Chris to go first, because his interaction with Mark has been more than mine has. Again, mine's only been 15 minutes, 15 minutes ago. And I think, I'm not opposed to what's, I'm not opposed to that being office and everything else. We just don't want it to be a nice or damaging Canyon Lakes, which I've put almost 10 years into, and a lot of people have invested in it. I, you know, that goes without saying. You guys know that. But anyway, Mark had offered a continuance upfront. I highly recommend we do that and we get some type of agreement together so we can come in here. And as a developer, I like it when people come in and support my projects versus opposing.
If I could-
Yeah, Mike, okay.
Just, I'm sorry. It appears, though, that we're down to like one issue, and I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, which seems to be from the neighborhood, the concern is screening, right? Is that fair, Mark?
That is fair.
Okay. So I think we can work that out with that continuance, don't you guys?
Well, that's what I would like to suggest. Mark pointed out a number of either errors in our staff report that need to be addressed and changed. O1, O2. He's changing the square footage of the office buildings from 24,000-plus down to 21, making other substantial other commitments that I think are all favorable. But this is all rather involved, and frankly, I didn't see anything in here and anything that you suggested, Mark, that I think is necessarily off-track. But there is the issue of screening, and just, you know, the minimum screening required by our ordinance is a 6-foot stockade fence, and I doubt anyone wants that, okay? But that's how the applicant could meet the requirement. He could stick up a 6-foot stockade fence. The applicant has to agree to this, but my suggestion would be, this thing needs to be cleaned up. Our application needs to be cleaned up. You've made some substantial changes. I would suggest you continue this till August. Get with these folks and see what you can do about screening. It needs to be addressed better than we're going to have a split rail fence, and if you all want to build one, build it. I think you can do better than that.
No offense, but we've given this pretty- If, are you, do you need time to discuss this screening with your client, Mark? Do you have a thought on screening? Let's hear it. I mean, if that's the only issue we're down to, I think we can move this along.
It might help for us to look at a couple of other exhibits, because I'm-
I mean, I don't need a long explanation. I've looked at your-
Can you show number one?
Yeah, I'm pretty clear on this personally.
See, they have a very, very nice entryway. They've spent a lot of money on that. They even have a waterfall out there.
Right. I know what they have. What I'm asking you is just a simple question. Are you willing to do screening? And if so, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hensley. I stated in my original presentation that we are committed to doing screening, and I read it out of the ordinance. Six-foot vegetation from the front to the back.
Okay, well, I don't think we'll, we can agree with that.
I believe that's what you need to sit down and talk with those folks about. I don't know that's enough. But again, I'm not comfortable with all that's been thrown around here today, taking this to conclusion today.
Cindy, could you show exhibit 5, 4, 5?
Cindy, could you show exhibit five, four, five?
I think we see where this is going, and I'm not going to point any fingers, but the staff report was confusing. A lot of the changes you want to make, I mean, you gave a 15-minute recitation I'd have liked to have seen in writing ahead of time, rather than take all that time to do this. And I would like you to come back on the 13th of August with a staff report and an agreement with your neighbors that will give, will take us three minutes to approve. So that, I mean.
And if you don't have an agreement with neighbors, that's okay too. At least have the differences defined.
Real clear, so we can deal with them real quickly and easily and understand what they are.
Sounds good.
Move to August 13th.
August 13th. We have a motion, a second, to continue item 36 to August 13th. We apologize to those of you who've had to sit around. We've got another long case coming up, so cast your votes, and we have a continuance.
Item 37 is ABC 837 for ABC Three overlay of the DBD District located at 201 North Walker.
This is the Civic Center and the Civic Center Park.
The whole.
The whole thing.
Thing.
Yep. All to the upper balcony and out to Walker.
All 200,000 square feet and all the park. My only question is, as long as this has been going and as warm as it's getting in here, are they serving yet?
Yeah. I've been asked that question several times today, honestly. I'm Jim Brown, City of Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department Civic Center Music Hall. I appreciate you all listening to us today. The application before you is to zone this as an ABC Three. This has been an ongoing project since 2012, just so you're aware. The City of Oklahoma City and the Civic Center Foundation entered into an agreement in 2012 to get a utilization study. Basically, that was awarded to Moda and to LMN Architects, basically for them to do a utilization, and also a master plan for Civic Center Music Hall, all those spaces that were not completed in 2001. The LMN brought in a nationally recognized consultants on food and beverage. The consultant came in, evaluated our operations and everything else, came back and said we needed significantly improved quality and variety of options available at Civic Center. In summary, what he said was, you're the only performing arts facility in the United States that I've ever been in that has prepackaged food, beverage, and items that are limited in selection. The foundation went out in 2000, it was approved by the city and the foundation in 2013. In 2014, the Civic Center Foundation sent representatives out to five performing arts facilities that are consistent with Civic Center, and I can list those if you so desire, like AT&amp;T Center, Arnoff Center, lots of facilities, just like Civic Center, for them to evaluate their food and beverage options that they had and other options that were going on. Now, what they saw was a significantly enhanced and improved food and beverage services. In 2015, the city approved an agreement with the foundation, and the foundation basically takes on the responsibility for those food and beverage operations. Their goal is to basically come through and make a enhanced and significantly improved offering to our, basically, all of our customers that come in over 350,000 per year, that basically could utilize that facility so that they can have a significantly enhanced and improved food and beverage service. It's also consistent with that of Chesapeake Arena, Cox, and the ballpark.
So I applaud the application, and I'll take a motion. Move approval. We have a motion, a second, approve item 37. Cast your votes, and you've got your ABC Three.
Thank you, and hope to see you all at Civic Center.
Item 38 is SPUD 829 to rezone 1,600 Northwest 16th and 1526 North McKinley from R2 to SPUD 829.
Hello, my name is Ben Sellers. I live at 605 Northwest 16th Street, and I am the owner of the property in question, also the developer. I will also try to make my description of the project as brief as possible. I assembled these parcels last year with the intent of developing a small mixed-use project, including rental apartments and retail along Northwest 16th Street, and to focus on walkability, bikeability, and public transportation. This area is one of the most diverse and eclectic neighborhoods in Oklahoma City, economically, culturally, and architecturally, and mixed use is the most appropriate use of this site. When we started designing, I asked my architect to design a building that is of our time, but also pays respect to the history and context of the area. Where we landed after a very long design process and many conversations with neighbors and stakeholders, is a building on 16th Street that has 23 apartments consisting of small studios and one-bedrooms, and just under 3,000 square foot of retail along 16th Street. The building is designed to be within the single-family height limits of 35 feet, has gable roof lines respecting the surrounding residential architecture. The buildings along McKinley have elevated front porches with planters creating a nice space for residents to interact with the street. The 16th Street site has 23 secured parking spaces behind the building for residents, which equates to one per bedroom, and there are eight public spaces along McKinley for guests of the retail establishment. The 15th Street building is a two-story building, also within the single-family height requirements, and it is four one-bedrooms and four two-bedroom apartments, and there are 14 parking spaces around this building. This building will also have elevated front porches as well.
Do we have a rendering of the second property?
It should be in the packet. A few things to note on the 16th Street building. There will be onsite bike storage and a bike repair facility for residents, bike racks for visitors, and a covered bus shelter for the embarked bus stop. And another couple of design notes, we specifically excluded balconies on the property, and we went back and forth on this, but balconies tend to get junked up with grills and lawn furniture and just stuff, and we thought that eliminating those would be more aesthetically pleasing and have long-term value. We also designed these to not have any external staircases, which also are sometimes unattractive on apartment buildings. At this time, I'd like my engineer, Tim, to talk about some of the specifics of the SPUD language.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. When Ben came to our staff and asked us to prepare the SPUD to really follow along his pre-designed concepts, and that's really what we've done. We've worked closely with the staff, and we minimized uses. And if you look at page two of the SPUD, you can see the very minimal uses that are allowed, basically the multifamily, single-family as the residential uses, and then in the commercial use, which would apply to the north tract, those uses have been whittled down to 12 uses total, which would allow for the type of local neighborhood commercial use that he's proposing there. Additionally, we talked to the staff about making an application to the Traffic Commission to allow for on-street parking on McKinley, south of 16th Street. We've worked with the location of the driveway, with, within its proximity to the intersection for his exit. All that stuff works well with the site and the spacing that's permitted there. With regard to the staff's comments, we agree with all the TEs that the staff has listed, and we even agree with the removal of the existing sign that we originally had included to be renovated as part of a historic nature, but I think my client has agreed, but we'll take it out, so. And with that, the SPUD is pretty straightforward. Be happy to answer any questions. Architect's going to talk about the building materials and things, which I think will be very important.
Questions at this point, Commissioners?
Would you talk just a little bit about the uses in terms of, you know, sort of tailoring them to neighborhood commercial?
Yes, the, paragraph 1.2 in the SPUD said, "The following use units shall also be permitted onsite but shall be of small scale and incidental to the residential use, i.e. small café, pharmacy, sandwich shops, small retail, small market," which is what we intend. It's 2,400 square feet. It's limited because of the limited parking that would be available for the commercial. That would be the parking, that's public parking on McKinley. And then to achieve those uses that I just read, we have the 12 items, which include professional office, business support service, convenience sales, but not a convenience store. We've eliminated liquor stores, convenience stores, e-cigarettes, and vape stores, which are normally used as obnoxious uses. We added the use unit to allow dwellings above ground floor, which is required to have live above retail. And then we've allowed for eating establishments, sit-down, alcohol not permitted, permitted, and unlimited alcohol, all the eating establishments, food and retail, beverage sales, personal services, repair services, and retail sales and services. All those little uses would be needed if we had a little jewelry store, a little art store, something like that. Does that answer your question?
Do you think all of the, no fast food?
No fast food, no, no drive-throughs, just the sit-down eating establishments.
Jim, when we were, when we met on this application, there was an indication that you and your client would consider one of the cholesterol windows on the east side of the 15th and McKinley portion of this application, this to avoid looking down the throats of the next-door neighbor. Have you agreed to do that?
We do agree to do that, and we will add that to the document. Sorry I didn't add that, but yeah, we, on the building at 15th Street, the upper stories, there'd be the clear-story windows that would be set at a height that you're not looking down into the neighbor's backyard, but allows natural light into the space. And Ben, I'm sorry, not Ben, Jeremy can, Gardner Architects can explain that?
Jeremy Gardner with Gardner Architects. So these are all my talking points, I won't go through all of them, I'm sure we're all ready to go through them.
Would you go, talk into the microphone and speak louder, please?
Okay. I just wanted to reinforce some of the things that Ben has already stated about the architecture and the goals that Ben kind of assigned to us, and those were to create an architecture that's contextual, that's timeless. And so our approach to that was to create a series of gable structures that helped manage the scale of the building, the way we front the neighborhood streets. The material palette that we selected was really drawn from, and so we've got the document that Ben handed out, as well as this one right here, kind of shows the material palette that was made available to us just by the surrounding neighborhoods. And so really what we were trying to do is draw from that and create a new architecture that, again, as Ben said, lives within the single-family guidelines in terms of height. But the materials are really site-specific, depending on which street they front. So for example, on this one right here, the 16th and McKinley, the structure that faces 16th is red brick, and it really kind of draws the inspiration from the core, the Plaza District, the existing building stock that's there. McKinley, that architecture and material palette is more residential in terms of the scale and the tactility of all the materials we selected.
So what is the material that faces McKinley on both buildings? It's the same, I assume?
On both buildings, those are, it's a wood siding with stucco and an architectural metal roofing. And again, one of the things that we wanted to make sure we consider was the longevity of the material, so that the lifespan of the facades really stood up to the test of time and did not look dilapidated. So those were the materials that we selected.
I had a question. So the, these units, right, the, are these, how many units is this? Just, I'm sorry, I'm.
There's 23 units on the, or in the structure that, at 16th and McKinley.
This one?
That one, yes.
And then at that one?
This one, there are eight.
Eight, so they're up and down?
Right, correct.
Okay, so you got, okay. And then you're, this is the only retail right there on the bottom floor, right?
That's correct, yeah.
And then the limited uses that you have there?
Correct.
And do you have any commercial uses down on 15th Street now, or not? That's eliminated?
Currently, there is no, no, no commercial uses.
Commercial on that side. Commercial's only on track one.
Okay, just wanted to be clear. Anything else, Commissioners, before we hear from the people who signed up?
Just, your tallest rooftop is 35 feet, right? So basically two-story high?
Correct.
Thank you.
There's really only two stories, two levels, but the peak of the roof is 35 feet, correct?
Correct.
And you've actually got three levels in the one building? Is that correct or not, on the corner?
No, it's, so it's, there, the ones, the first level of units are flats, and the units upstairs have a bedroom in the gable, so, and like.
Oh, okay, so there's loft or gable kind of situation?
Right. But to clarify the height, the gables of these are actually at 37, the peak of the gable's at 37 feet. That happened when we elevated them to create the raised porch, but code states the height is measured on the average between the edge and the gable, so that's how they're still within the single-family height limits.
Okay, I'm going to call on the protesters, and 11 of you have signed up, so.
Are we ready? We're going to hear this, right? I mean, we don't want to go through a 30, 40-minute process, right? You guys have all sat down and met and everything, so there's no more discussion, we're going to have a decision. Okay, good, thank you.
So one, I want to know if you've got a spokesman who wants to go first, and again, second, the other thing I want to ask is that you not repeat what someone has said before you, so that we get new information from each of you who speak.
Brought some items for you guys to review.
And what was your name?
Jessica Thompson.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 1414 Northwest 14th Street. The legal site sheet is at Streetscape. I've forgotten the chapter standard, but I don't have a whole lot of copies left, but if you guys can share. Okay, I serve on the board for Class and Tenpen as the secretary, but Jim's going to talk to you about the board decision. I've lived in Class and Tenpen for five years, and this, if you look at the Streetscape on the first page, right here, the bottom, it'd be our left, is what used to be there. It used to be a two-story brick house. And then if you look at what he's putting there, it's a lot bigger, a lot different. So that being said, we asked Ben to reduce the number of units to accommodate parking because there are a lot of neighbors along McKinley that did not like the idea of congestion and all the noise. We asked him to reduce the townhomes to about four to six units, perhaps making them a little bit bigger in the inside, and then just maybe not even doing the one and a half, but let me get on point here. So we asked him to reduce the apartment units to 10 to 15 instead of the 23. By decreasing the quantity of units, this can allow you to increase the square footage of the townhomes and apartments, if willing, seeing as one-bedroom units could not support a family of three, which can increase the pool of potential customers. Typically, neighborhoods despise apartments because of the lack of ownership or investment, which is a problem that Class and Tenpen already has and is trying to address with the Oklahoma City SNI program. Apartments are appropriate downtown, seeing as there is very little owner-occupied housing where residents don't have to worry about property values and surrounding sky rises. In a neighborhood, there is a different dynamic where apartments simply do not fit in. This would also help decrease parking problems that neighbors are worried about. For 2013, I had the planning department, and you have it, it's with this, it's the third page, it's from the planning department, it's the 2013 statistics, shows 31% of the neighborhood is owner-occupied. And that's one reason why we have the SNI program, it's to help produce more homeowners. And right now, we're just not seeing that, and with 23 units, that's going to contribute to the already 69% non-owner-occupied in the neighborhood. So we do see that as an issue. But as a neighborhood, you know, we said, we're welcome to see apartments there, we would just like it to be reduced, the reduced amount. would just like it to be reduced, the reduced amount. And then also, if you refer to the streetscapes, the first page, this development has more of a downtown, or should I say midtown feel to it, rather than a residential feel. To encourage a more residential feel that coordinates with the surrounding homes, we as, some neighbors said, we would like to see the following changes, where it says that there's 70% brick veneer, rock or stone masonry, which is something we'd see in the suburbs of Edmond, you know, you see a lot of stone and brick. In Class and Ten Pin, you don't see a lot of stone and brick, you see a lot of wood, or you, on the newer homes that are being built, you'll see a hardy board, because it's a little bit, it lasts a little bit longer than the wood. But you do see brick as well, you just don't see a lot of stone. Stone was more incorporated, like in the '30s or the '40s. The neighborhood is, we have a few homes that were born in, or made in the late 1800s, and then to about 1920s, 1930s at the latest, most were built. So we would like to see rock and stone taken out of that, we don't want to see rock and stone with this development. And then also, he put in no more than 30% EIFS, stucco, wood, or concrete board shall be permitted. We would like to increase that to 100%, especially on the townhomes, because right now he has them at stucco, and if you look at the streetscape, there is nothing on there that's stucco. And when you look at those townhomes, those are all going to be stucco. He said there'll be a little bit of wood, but when you drive by, you're going to see the stucco. So we would like that removed and possibly replaced with the wood or hardy board to fit in more with the character of the neighborhood. We're fine with the metal roofing, we've seen a few metal roofs in the neighborhood, they last a little, last a little bit longer, so we don't mind that. And then, last but not least, for me, I'm just going to say that Northwest 16th Street can't support strong commercial business, and I believe it was not intended to do so as it is a two-lane street with no more than, with no more, with no room for any other lanes. And as much as I, as I do like new development, the neighbors do want development there, such as what Positively Paseo has introduced to the neighborhood, we just don't support development with a lack of respect to neighborhood features. Too many people that are agreeing with this development have this philosophy that this is better than nothing. And I believe that as a resident, we should hold the neighborhood to a higher standard, and we should agree to a development because it is best for the future and sustainability of the neighborhood. And I feel this apartment complex will not be best for the future and sustainability of the neighborhood as it sits now. And then on the second page, this is along McKinley, where the 15th Street development is, and you'll see there, I mean, this is a really large building, you know, 35 feet, and if you look at all these homes, they are way less than 35 feet. So I'd like you guys to consider that when you vote about the height as well. And I'll finish up there, thank you for your time.
You're Mr. Seifeld, I presume?
I'm Jim Demster.
Oh, okay.
I'm Vice President, Class and Ten Pin Association, and I bought a house there, I live at 1601 North Kentucky, after living in Edmond for about 25 years. I decided to move down in this area, I looked all around, you know, from deep Dues Brick Town all the way over, I kind of fell in love with the Class and Ten Pin area because of the old houses, the style of houses that are there, I looked at Paseo pretty heavily as well, liked that areas as well. But I also like the Plaza District, and I invite you all to come to Plaza Live tomorrow night, drive around and get a good feel for the neighborhood on both sides, Gatewood on the north, Class and Ten Pin on the south, especially when something like Plaza Live is going on, which is every second Friday of the month. But as a executive committee, the Class and Ten Pin voted unanimously against this development based on neighbors directly affected and for their overall fit for Class and Ten Pin, which Jessica just mentioned. What I'm here to talk about is really reducing the number of units for safety and emergency response purposes, the streets are narrow, parking is already at a premium due to the popularity of the district, and houses are generally on small lots, there's dense population, there's over 1,000 houses in the Class and Ten Pin area, so it is already a tight fit with the number of, as you've heard now, number of non-owner occupants, a lot of houses are rented, a lot of cars, a lot of vehicles down there, so that is a big issue. There's also some concerns, you know, and the property already is, at 16th, is already zoned, is currently zoned at R1, and I'm not sure that's exactly correct in the SPD on what it's showing. And it's zoned for R1 for obvious purposes that have been mentioned here with this, the size of the lots that are there, the parking premiums, et cetera. 15th and McKinley is R2, and again, you know, there's reasons why these are zoned there. The SPUD does mention multifamily residential, however, I'm not sure it's quite right. Is it R4, the 8,200.12, which is only 17 units per acre? Or is it, you know, so I think there's some concern here in terms of this SPUD being written up correctly and adjusted correctly. And we think that the SPUDs ought to be split between these two properties. Right now, it does, as I read the SPUD, it asks for commercial on 15th and McKinley, but yet they just said, no, no commercial in there. So I'm not sure exactly, you know, what's going to get approved here. You know, we've met with Ben, we've talked with him, but there is non-agreement with the neighbors. There has been a few changes that he's made, we think that there ought to be a continuance so that we can continue to work through these. We are pro-development, we like development. I moved there because I wanted to improve this neighborhood. You know, there's, I can't remember the number now, but at least 10% of the houses, maybe, I think 20% are vacant, rundown. You know, there's opportunity for plenty of development in this area, it's a great location for right downtown Oklahoma City, the closest residential area pretty much. So let's do it right, whatever gets built's going to be there 100 years, let's make sure we get it right when we build it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Garman?
I sent a letter to everybody.
Okay. Janet Seifeld?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Janet Seifeld, I live at 1828 North Indiana Avenue, I'm a resident of Gatewood Historic District. I'm here today representing myself as a resident, although I do serve on the Gatewood Historic District Board and have done so for 20 years. My husband and I bought our home in 1996, at a time when Gatewood was not the progressive neighborhood it is today, and the Plaza District was nothing like it is today. I served on the Plaza District Board, I served as their president, and I supported all development within the Plaza District proper at the time I served on its board. There were proposals for mixed-use development, and I wholeheartedly supported those. Between myself and a GHD board, previous board member, we cover almost 40 years of development within Gatewood Historic District. During that time, we have never seen a project proposal of this density or this scope. I have three concerns about this proposal, and I am not anti-development. Most proposed developments that have come before me in 20 years, I have been supportive of, if not in whole, at least in part, and I am supportive of this development in part. The three things that disturb me are that there are too many rental units. Like Class and Ten Pin, we are concerned about the owner-occupied percentage of our neighborhood. Gatewood is currently zoned 90% R1, and that was a very hard-fought achievement. In the 1940s, a lot of the homes along Northwest 16th Street became boardinghouses, they were abandoned, they became rundown, and they began to decay, and they became blight on Gatewood, on Northwest 16th Street, and on Oklahoma City. In the 1970s, the neighborhood formed an organization that has existed now for 41 years. In the 1980s, the city approached Gatewood and other neighborhoods and asked us to tighten our zoning, to develop a plan that would help us protect ourselves, and we did that. We rezoned 16th Street to R1 and R2 for a purpose, to protect us against things like this. We asked that the city look at our concerns, because they are substantial concerns, not just for ourselves and the future, based on what's happened in the past, but we truly believe that the majority of people who move into historical areas do so for a variety of reasons, but chief among those is the historical integrity of the neighborhood itself. And once that's gone, it's gone forever. You don't get to say, oops, and let's undo it, it simply goes away. The three things that concern me are the too many rental units. This is an R1, and I'm speaking only to...
We've heard that discussion before, so if you could tell us something new, please?
I will. I'm speaking only to 1600 Northwest 16th Street. What we are asking is for the city to look at what you asked us to do 30 years ago and what we did in response to that. We're asking you now to look at the current zoning is R1, and to recognize that to take a property from R1 and to zone it and have it accommodate 23 rental units and 3,000 square feet of retail space is gross overdevelopment. Class and Ten Pin is concerned about it, and Gatewood is concerned about it, and we hope that the city is concerned as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Pearson?
My name is Robert Pearson, I own properties at 1610 Northwest 16th, which is adjacent to the vacant lot, and I do have a problem with the, with the building there, because the property, the building will be looking down into my properties. And I would like to know exactly where their property line is where they're building this building, because it will totally block my building, my house, from 16th Street on the corner.
Well, we don't have an answer for you in terms of the property line, I'm sorry.
And also, I do understand, also, I have a problem with the zoning there, because I'm not included and I'm adjacent to the property. And Mr. Sellers owns the property, both sides of my property. So I think, I don't know what's going on here, but he owns both properties and one side's zoned and I'm not included, and he owns both, and he wants to change it to commercial. And I'm not in agreeance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janine Knight?
Hi, my name's Janine, my name's Janine Knight, and I live at 1519 Northwest 16th, which is northeast diagonally across from this property at 1600. And I've started petition of going around on the neighborhood to get people to sign to oppose this, I'd like to... I've, I've lived in my house for 17 years, and like Janet said, you know, I lived there when it was a scary place, and now it's come to what it is now. I think what would be a better use of that service, that area, is like Commissioner Powers said, was one of those pocket neighborhoods. We have several of those in Gatewood, and they are wonderful, and we have not opposed them at all. Also, I worry about the commercial part of it, because it can be a slippery slope, because he's already trying to come down to McKinley and 16th. We just recently had a, a property advertised at 1401 Northwest 16th that the bottom floor of the house could be used as commercial. So my concern is that this is a slippery slope to start if we get outside of the current boundaries of Plaza now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Bob Aldrop?
I agree with everything that's been said.
Good man, thank you.
I've been there for more than 20 years.
Matthew Fong?
Hi, my name is Matthew Fong, I live at 1613 North Marion, which is right behind this development. Let me give you some background, I, I'm really interested in development, so I was shocked, I was frankly shocked when I got this SPUD out of the blue in the mail without hearing anything about it. Ben said that he contacted the neighborhood, unfortunately, he didn't, he talked to some friends who might have been in the neighborhood. We didn't hear about this until after, you know, this all came and was applied for. We spoke to Ben in a few meetings, we tried to hold a discussion with him, I specifically tried to mediate between him and some neighbors, because obviously there is some adamant concerns. Unfortunately, Ben just hasn't been receptive to this. We, we went through a lot of different proposals to improve the appearance of the building, which obviously sticks out from our historic Craftsman homes. We went through some ideas to possibly reduce congestion, and some of these other things have been talked about. I found out yesterday morning that Ben had actually revised the SPUD, not even letting us know, or letting us know that these things had been changed, or nothing, no communication at all, until I went in, looked at this agenda to find out what was going on. That doesn't seem like it's appropriate to me. I think Ben should have involved this neighborhood much more, I think that this definitely needs to be continued so that Ben has that opportunity to work with us. I am not opposed to this development if it's done right, as others have said, but I want to make sure it's done right, because it directly affects me and everyone else around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Harden?
I agree with everything that's been said.
Ann Murphy?
I have that in mind.
Michael Daniel?
I agree with Mr. Jennifer Johnson.
This is getting easier. Jennifer Sylvester?
I agree with the progress of the neighborhood.
Okay, now we'll hear from the supporters. Chris Ferguson?
Chris Ferguson, 1201 Northwest 19th Street. I'm in support of this project because it actually has smaller units, a lot of the new construction nowadays are a little bit bigger, and it's unaffordable to some people that might be starting out in life, who don't have many possessions. I'm hoping by Mr. Sellers building smaller units with bicycles and stuff, that it'll be able to be a place where people can get a start in life. Class and Ten Pin had a lot of garage apartments that were built in the '40s that supported the war effort, and once that ended, a lot of people moved away from there. So there are some units that are 400 square feet, but a lot of them are dilapidated or unsafe. I'm hoping that with the smaller units, we'll have people who are going to be transient in the neighborhood, but we'll be able to add some, some street life, and we'll give them a good, safe way to start. Not every new home or apartment needs to be very big to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anderson Dark?
Hi, my name's Anderson Dark, and I live at 1932 Northwest 16th. Unlike some of the people you've heard speak earlier, I'm actually new to the neighborhood. My wife and I moved there recently, because we both worked downtown and fell in love with the Plaza. We looked in the Paseo and all over the other areas that are growing right now in Oklahoma City, and we chose the Plaza because of the culture and what's going on there right now. I believe that this development is a continuation of the culture and uniqueness of the Plaza. There's a lot of talk about homes being historic, however, if you drive south of 16th Street, 10% of them are unoccupied, there's boards up on walls. I think that if we allow this type of production and development to occur, it might encourage others to actually go in and renovate those homes and grow the area out. So I support it, I hope you guys vote for it today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Andy and Megan, you're going to have, Mueller, is it?
Andy Mueller, 1616 North McKinley. So my wife and I, Megan, moved to the area in 2013, so not new per se, but definitely not quite as invested in the neighborhood as some of the other folks. We really have loved our time there, we moved to the area for a lot of the reasons you might expect, and a lot of reasons you might hear, proximity to the Plaza, proximity to community events, restaurants, retails, retailers, and suffice to say, we could not be more pleased that this development is even being considered. We think it's exactly what this area needs. The lot across the street from our house faces directly out, I mean, immediately across the street, and I think that that's probably the only unique perspective I can give you to other people that are in support, is this the extreme proximity, right across the street, and then right in between the lot on, further down on McKinley. We feel that there's a huge demand, and we see it every day, we see demand for people wanting to move there, we see demand for people wanting to eat and purchase things there. And there's frankly not enough single homes that are, you know, attainable for younger people or people of moderate income, we think that this is potentially a way that that can happen. We really love the way that the unit looks, that's a personal opinion, we love that it's taking some of the history of the area, not looking, making something that's perfectly modern, but something that's respectful, something that's lower, some of the changes he presented today, we feel like are really admirable, they are going to keep us feeling like we have a neighborhood feel when we look outside of our window. And we don't think it's mutually exclusive, we don't think, our viewpoint is not, this is better than nothing, our viewpoint is that this is a good use of this space, and that anything less than mixed use would be a waste of the space and not a continuation of 16th and what is naturally... happening there. And we also think it's not mutually exclusive between homeownership and apartments. We feel like if this opportunity was opened up to people that they're gonna move there, like us, they're gonna love the area and they're gonna invest in the area, like we are and as we want to continue to do. Those people that love the area, where are they gonna move when they do have a family or do need more space? They're gonna stay in that area. So I think it's a little nearsighted to talk strictly about homeownership and immediacy because I think a good, healthy balance could be just what the neighborhood needs moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, anyone here who didn't sign up but would like to speak?
I'll be brief. My name is Ben Bremer. I live at 2000...
Into the microphone because this gets recorded and filmed.
Of course, sorry. I'll be brief. My name is Ben Bremer. I live at 2000 North Gatewood Avenue. Recent, recently moved to the area, and I just wanted to say that as someone who lives in the heart of Gatewood, who just purchased a home as a young adult, I think this is a really incredible opportunity for the neighborhood to get some more economic stimulation. We moved here because the neighborhood is beautiful, and there is a lot of historic character, but there's also a lot of dilapidated and ignored properties. And we think that this property is something that could be really beneficial. And I, and I took somewhat of offense to some of the previous people speaking on behalf of Gatewood. There are plenty of people who live in the middle of Gatewood who really do support this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, since we're here? Okay, Mr. Sellers? Anything you'd like to say in response to anything you've heard?
So, this has been in the works for a long time, and while I did not begin meeting with the neighborhood boards in an official capacity until about six weeks ago, I was reaching out to residents in the neighborhood throughout both neighborhoods and business and property owners in the Plaza District to get their input. So, very much thoughtful, thoughtfulness went into the design of this project. Some of us are just gonna have to agree to disagree. I believe this higher density mixed use is what's appropriate for the site. There's some people who want to see a single-family home on the site. Incidentally, there was multifamily on the site. There was three apartment units which I owned, and I tore down the other home I own to the west, which is not part of this, was a burned-out crack house. I also tore it down a few weeks ago. The site at 15th Street was a vacant convenience store. It was built in the 1920s, and it boarded up for probably a decade. So that was always a commercial business. So even though I've got eight apartments there, it was a commercial convenience store business for many years. I believe this is the best thing for the site. I'm not here to try to damage either neighborhood, but I think this is really a positive thing to homeownership. Class and Ten Pen does have a lot of rentals, a lot of boarded-up homes, a lot of bad property. There's a lot of great property there, too. There's a lot of people, many of them are here, have been investing for a long time. This being rentals, I think is a positive thing because these are going to be high-quality rentals, and the people who live here are gonna be the people who buy these homes and fix them up over the next few years and coming years. And I truly believe that. I'm kinda rambling here, so I've kinda lost my train of thought. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Commissioners?
Can I just want to point...
Tim, you have something?
Yes, please. Pointy clarification on the, the commercial, the original application. It did have the two tracks, one and two, specifically identified as track one for commercial only, or the, or the uses would be only in there. I think in all the modifications we've done over the many meetings Ben has had, that got eliminated. So we clarified that the commercial uses would only be in track one at the building at 16th and McKinley. And the other thing that we would also agree to do is to include the renderings showing the specific materials to be included as the materials to be used.
Well, looking at the staff report, if we, if we do approve this, we need to identify tracks one and two, and they are not separated in the staff report that I would consider.
It's on the map, but it's like that map right there.
I know, but not in what we're looking at and will approve, so I'd want a T that says no commercial on track two, which is the 15th Street and McKinley site, as clarification. Nick?
Well, Tim was mentioning building materials, this is a minor issue, but architect mentioned a lot of wood and stucco. Have you considered the hardy board type thing for maintenance sake, so it doesn't...
We've looked at several things. The stucco that we're proposing is actually cementous, cementous stucco. It's not ephesus, so it's a cement material, so we think it would hold up just like hardy board, hardy board wood.
Stucco is coated on over what?
What's that?
Stucco is coated on over what?
Cement.
Yeah.
And hardy board is a cement-based product.
I understand.
Other discussion, commissioners?
Look, I think we've seen, I will just say, this is kind of, you know, the transition we've talked about and all our things about, you know, this new urbanism, people moving down and new construction coming in and retail and new mixed-use developments. I think, I think that, I think if I could paraphrase for me, the question is, I like the, I like the development, and I generally have heard not a lot of, some negative about the, they want the development, they don't want it this dense, if I could say. But I think that, you know, with what's going on in the Plaza, new development down there, this is kind of fitting what we're looking for, to me, in some of the housing structures that we're looking at downtown, as well as other places. It's close, but I'm kinda leaning that way.
Well, here's, I mean, I've been the recipient, perhaps the rest of you have too, of dozens of letters. The first wave was not in support, and the first wave had indications that, that you weren't listening, or they didn't, what they wanted to have in here wasn't put in, et cetera. And then here comes another wave. The last one was I got an hour and a half ago on my cellphone of support, you know, and then there was another one, two hours before that, not support. So here, with everything that has been said and written, and then your presentation and your, you know, with the architecture and the, and the project itself, when I first heard about this, I drove by the location with Janice, and I went, whoa, that'd be a big building and a retail thing on the far corner, and it, and it is a big building. It's a great big building on a lot that had one house on it, you know, 100 years ago. I have a feeling that in order to make this thing work for you and for the property owners, one of whom, you know, you live four blocks away on 19th Street. I mean, it's like you're not in the neighborhood. Person in the back lives next door, you know, so what I would like, I think, the, the development on 15th Street, track two, is that the one, the track two bit, it's, it's, has less units, eight units, I think, in it, is that right?
Correct.
Well, two bedrooms upstairs, you know, bedroom downstairs. On the footprint of the building that was already there, you've just gone up.
That's correct.
And you've made concessions about, you know, the windows that would face to the east, that that wouldn't be visible to the neighborhood there, and you're, and you have parking, you know, for all these people. That, to me, is okay, track two. Track one, though, you have a really massive structure right in 16th Street, and while you've made great provisions about parking in the front, the, you know, those slots for the commercial, and then, you know, you've got, but really what we're dealing with is, is 23 units and 3,000 square foot of commercial that has been described as either, either a restaurant, you know, where you have alcohol served, or you divide it up disguised as a strip shopping center, but nevertheless, it's divided up into nodes of commercial that's there. I don't, I object, I've had a really strong feeling about that because I thought you can't extend the Plaza District commercial that far. Well, after discussion with you and with Tim, it's only a block away, you know, it's the end of it. And besides, it's back to Janice what we've looked at about the little commercial nodes and neighborhoods. I don't object to that, you know, but perhaps I object to the size, you know, to the, to the massive quantity of commercial and to the number of units that you're gonna be putting together here. What I would like, here's what I would like, even though everybody's put an enormous amount of effort in this, this kind of development in an older neighborhood, and I live in one. I live in Linwood, which is to the west, you know, and we have houses all around and then all around us, very small bungalows and problems with deterioration and boarding up and everything else. If you're going to be putting something like this in that kind of neighborhood, I think that you've maybe pushed the envelope a little too far with the number of units you want to have in it and the, and the size of the, of the building. I would like to see another round of discussion with neighbors. I mean, I really would, because it's really important to the people that are protesting and also giving credence to the people to say, I want this. I can see absolutely a necessity in this part of the world located in, you know, what we're talking close to inner-city, for affordable rental units for people, and we, and also, I'm not sure you described, there's bike racks, there's a bus stop that you're going to incorporate into this, and there's a bus on McKinley that comes around. You know, this is walkability to the Plaza District, this is bus downtown, this is bicycling, et cetera. All that, all that makes sense. I know that you're probably, on your, on your, your projections, your pro formas, that 23 units, 3,000 square foot, times X number, da-da-da, so I can do and afford to build this. But I would like to have just one more round before I'm, and I'm really not, again, I'm not against it. I think I'm, I'm concerned about the density, the number of units that you're gonna try to squeeze in here and the 3,000 square foot of, of commercial. Just one more round, and I would, I would really request that you do this before we start taking action on this because I'm divided. I mean, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a tough problem as the people that are here, you know, they know that it is. But in deference to them, giving another shot, another meeting, and maybe some concessions that you could develop that still fits in with your pro forma business plan, and come back on the 13th of August, that's what I would suggest.
So, let us have a round of discussion, then we'll come back. Nick, you had something next?
Well, a couple of observations. Mike mentioned this is pretty consistent with what we're seeing being developed downtown, and it certainly is. But this isn't downtown. This is in a neighborhood. Bob, you mentioned, well, expansion of, of Plaza. Well, it is and it isn't. Plaza really stops at about Blackwolder. This is farther down the street, and certainly if you go down to 15th. I share your concern about, about density. Two problems I have with this application, and I'm not trying to take a cheap shot at, at the architecture per se, but the architecture makes an attempt to get all the gable and all that of the old-type houses. But this is, the scale it is, is totally inconsistent with the neighborhood and the density. Our staff report doesn't appear to be able to figure out if we're talking about R4 or R4M, but whatever it is, the, the density is, is a little heavy. I agree with, with Bob on that. And because of that, I'm, those two points, I can't support it in its present form.
Janice?
I think that the big problem with this application is the density. It, the question of whether it is or is not an extension of the Plaza District, I think, is, is the question that's before us. You know, when you go and look, the Plaza District does have a stopping point. What is between this and what's there, the Plaza District, is residential. And so, I mean, I think if we approve commercial at this location at this size, at this scale, then we're inviting an extension of the Plaza District, and I'm not sure that's something I want to do. I think, I have long been concerned, and even during the process of the redevelopment of the Plaza District, which, let's face it, from what was there to what's there now is hard to argue with. But, but my concern about it was always, what is the actual impact of that on the existing neighborhoods to the north and to the south? And we haven't had a great deal of feedback and input from people about how living next to what is the Plaza District now is working for them. I think there may be an element of generational shift here. I do like the idea of there being this lower-cost residential development in the area. I personally have had to get over the resistance that I have to seeing very modern development in infill in these older neighborhoods in terms of appearance, you know. If I designed this, and I'm not an architect, it would all, you know, look like miniature craftsman-style housing, you know, because that's what surrounds it, and that's what it looks like, and that's what I would be comfortable with. But I have to say, in those areas, even in the very older districts where there has been modern infill, it seems it takes you a little while to, you know, when you're driving by it, to stop kind of, you know, looking at it funny, but eventually it blends right in. The trees grow up and the, you know, the landscaping matures, and it looks like it's always been there. So I've kind of gotten over that part of it. I think that the big issue here, certainly the big issue for me, is the density and the scale, and if those could be brought more, and it's primarily on track one. So I think if those could be brought more into alignment with the area around it, I could support it, but I'm not quite there yet.
Any word else before I comment? Well, one comment that a protester made that resonated with me more than some of the others was the commercial and the possibility that 16th Street could wind up with a lot of commercial. And you're two blocks from the Plaza District right now with residential in between. So I had a bit of angst when I heard the comment, but also how I'd thought about the Janice hit on another point that interested me because when we were going through developing the city's master plan, as I talked to planning commissioners, I admonished us to think about how this plan works 30 years from now and how it impacts young people and how they want to live and how they want to use the city. I'll age out, and you all are gonna be using the city 30 years from now. I will not. And it's just struck me that the support for the application came right here from, from this group. And that's telling to me. I think that the project fundamentally is a good one and a good idea. I would not ever accept the argument that would, no one would ever build a single-family residential house on that lot because it's being done now throughout Class and Ten Pen. So, I mean, that could obviously happen, but I think a project like this potentially benefits the neighborhood and the community, and it does provide a living opportunity for a group that might not have it in that area right now. So my conclusions are, one, I'm not really fond of the commercial that far off, off the Plaza, although I understand that it would be minimal, but it does open the gates for that to become more prevalent up and down the street. And I think if there were a few... more prevalent up and down the street, and I think if there were a few fewer residents and that building wasn't quite so dominant, because everything around it is one-story except for the two-story house directly across the street on the north side, so it really is striking when you drive down the street and you're passing a bunch of single-family story houses and then this very large structure appears. So, those are my thoughts.
So, you guys want to continue it or do you want to hear? You want to vote?
I do not want to continue it, but I'd like a brief explanation to why.
Say, say again?
I do not want to continue it, because I've continued it once, and this design process started six months ago.
Okay, so this is the application you want us to vote on? Is that fair? Just so we understand, we're not gonna do a continuance, you want to vote?
That's correct, but...
All right.
I cannot reply to any of the comments that were just...
Yeah, I'm not saying you can, I just want to, you know...
Your opportunity to speak, absolutely.
Yeah, so, you're right, this is absolutely an extension of the Plaza District, and it is, absolutely. The Plaza District does stop next to the mule there, that pud 1257 is a very large two-story house that is currently commercial use, so between me and the commercial use are two duplexes and that's it. So, and it's about 150 feet, so it is very close, and I also agree that I do not think it'd be appropriate for commercial to go east past McKinley. I agree. I understand the argument of slippery slope, but there is a very defined context of single-family homes east of McKinley. My site's a half acre vacant, the house across the street is boarded up, there's another vacant lot across, the guy next door to me, Mr. Pearson, is running a car repair business out of the backyard. This lot, there's no single-family regular context there. So, but I do agree, this is an extension of the Plaza. The map I handed out, I handed out a three-page document, and one of those is from the city planning department, and it shows business and commercial going to McKinley and mixed use all the way down to 14th. So, I took very, very much the inspiration a year ago, came from that map, and the city's plan and the city put out there showing the growth of the Plaza District that direction. To density, everything we hear about today in new urbanism and smart planning and smart growth is about increasing density. This isn't dense just to be dense, but I don't want to, I wouldn't want it to be opposed just because it's dense. The number of units we came up with on 16th were based partly on a pro forma, partly on what we could park behind it with a one-car-per-bedroom. As a concession, I can remove three apartments from my plan and have three extra residential parking spaces, I can do that without affecting the building, because you can't just like chop off part of the building and remove square footage, but I could make a few larger units and get it down to 20 apartments, which I would do. And then to the scale, it is larger than the single-family homes right next to it, but it is still within single-family height limits, so, and we worked very hard to keep it below the single-family height limits. So, in conclusion, much time and thought went into being very respectful of the neighborhood and thinking about long-term growth of the Plaza District and the residences, and further conversations will not change anybody's minds behind me, so...
So, is that 20 units on 16th, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
And the application is the rest as proposed, right? I personally, just speaking only for myself because I'm about to make a motion, I don't have any problem with this retail. I don't have any problem at all with this retail. I think that that's, I mean, look, I can see the apartments that are right next to the mule in this, in this picture, and so personally, I think, I think this is, I think it's a good development. It is, it is a bit large, but at 20 units, maybe not, so I'll move approval.
Is there a possibility of rebuttal on this?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you, though.
You've all had your turn, and he has a chance to rebut, so that's... We have a motion and a second to approve it. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
It's as conditioned with the 20 units versus 23.
What? Okay, still approved.
Thank you.
That's out of character.
I think, no, not yet, let him... Excuse me, if you all would... Gents, if you would head for the hall, we have some more business to do, so thank you.
Item number 39 is to adopt Plan OKC as the conference of plan of Oklahoma City. This was back on the agenda to correct a notification issued from last time.
So, a motion to adopt the master plan.
I thought we did this last time.
It wasn't properly noticed, so we needed to do it.
Move approval.
Okay, cast your votes, and it's approved. You didn't approve it? Lee?
Oh.
And since it's 6:24, anybody have anything else? I don't want to run through the list, if I can help it. Motion to adjourn? We're done.